This hearing is being conducted in accordance with the applicable provisions of the open meeting law, including the provisions of an act extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency that was signed by Governor Baker on June 16, 2021. The new law allows the board to continue its practice of holding virtual hearings that it adopted during the COVID-19 pandemic until April 1st, 2022. This hearing of the board is being held remotely via the WebEx event platform. This meeting is also being livestreamed. In order to ensure this hearing of the board is open to the public, members of the public may access this hearing through telephone and video conferencing. The information for connecting to this hearing is listed on today's hearing agenda, which is posted on the public notices page of the city's website, boston.gov. Members of the public will enter the virtual hearing as attendees, which means you will not see yourself on the screen and you will be muted throughout unless administratively unmuted when asked to comment. As with our in-person meetings, comments in support will be followed by comments in opposition. The order of comments is as follows: elected officials, representatives of elected officials, and members of the public. The number of people called upon to offer comment and the time for commenting will be limited by the chair as time constraints require. For that reason, the board prefers to hear from members of the public who are most impacted by a project, that is, those individuals who lived closest to the project. If you wish to comment on an appeal, please click the raise your hand icon in the application via the WebEx event platform. To raise your hand, click the participant information icon. From there, find your name, and on the lower right-hand side, you should see a hand raising icon. Click that icon and your hand will be virtually erased. Click it again and your hand should go down. If you are connected to the hearing by telephone, please press star three to raise your hand. Let me repeat that again. If you are connected by telephone, please press star three to raise your hand. Those called upon to comment will be asked to state their name and address first and then can provide their comment. In the interest of time and to ensure that you have enough time to do so, please raise your hand as soon as Mr. Fortune reads the address into the record. Do not raise your hand before the relevant address is called, or the meeting hosts will not know to call on you at the appropriate time. So just a reminder, please raise your hand exactly when the address is called, and please lower it when you are done putting your name and address and putting any information on the record. These instructions will be repeated throughout the hearing. Let me make sure that everyone is on board. Mark Fortune.
Good morning, Madam Chair.
Good morning, Mr. Mark Ehrlich.
I'm here, thank you.
Mr. Rogirio.
Good morning, Madam Chair.
Good morning, Ms. Donk.
Good morning, Madam Chair.
Good morning, Ms. Barazza.
Good morning, Madam Chair.
Good morning, Mr. Kandell.
Good morning, Madam Chair.
Good morning, Mr. Hampton.
Good morning, Madam Chair.
Good morning. So let me remind all board members, please, when you make a motion, put your name on the record. If you second a motion, put your name on the record. If you are opposed to a motion, also put your name on the record. Okay? This is just so that we are meeting, we are meeting open meeting law requirements. Mr. Fortune.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning, everyone. This is, the first order of business is the approval of the hearing minutes of December 1st, 2020, and December 8th of 2020. We need a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second, Joe.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Calling the first extension, calling case BOA 943-624-118, Marcella Street. Madam Chair, this will be their first extension. If we do grant it, it will expire on August 2nd of 2021. Name an address for the record, please.
Good morning, Mr. Secretary. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Attorney Joseph Feaster from the law firm of Mackenzie and Associates, 183 State Street, Suite 6, Boston, 02109. Madam Chair and members of the board, on July 9th, a hearing was held on July 9th where this board granted the requested variance, and the date of entry of this decision was August 2nd, 2019. During that timeframe, since then, this is a project which was administered and awarded through an RFP process by the City of Boston's Department of Neighborhood Development. And between the time of your granting of the variances and to the present, several things had changed which, which affected my client having the ability to go forward, one of which was the environmental cleanup of the city-owned site. Through negotiations over that time, and it has been worked out between the city and my client, but that has also created a delay. As a result of those discussions with the city, the, my client has only recently been able to secure financing and commence the construction. So, as the indication...
Mr. Feaster, thank you. Because Mr. Fortune has promised will be here six, three hours, whereas Mr. Rogirio is betting on six hours. So, thank you for that. May I have a motion, please?
Motion to extend for a year post-termination.
Barazza.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You are all set for a year, Mr. Feaster.
Thank you. Can I have the date, Mr. Fortune? Did you say August?
One year from August 2nd.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, members.
Calling your next case, calling BOA 810-158-25, Everett Street. Madam Chair, this will be their first extension. If we do grant it, it also will expire on August 2nd of 2021. Name an address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Attorney Lawrence Catino from Richard Lindsay's office, care on, excuse me, business address of 245 Sumner Street, East Boston, 02128. We're requesting a one-year extension from August 2nd, 2021. The board had granted a variance to erect a six-unit dwelling. The, we anticipate that the permits for this should be pulled no later than the end of the year, so we're just asking for a one-year extension so that we are able to finish the construction drawings and get those uploaded to inspectional services.
May I have a motion, please?
Motion to extend for a year beyond termination.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 909-790-33, Mayfield Street. Madam Chair, this will be their first extension. It did expire on July 12th of 2021. Name an address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Attorney Derek Small, 1 Thompson Road. We're here seeking a one-year extension of the board's granting of these variances with regard to this project.
So, Mr. Small, just to clarify, you're here for 33 Mayfield, right?
That is correct.
May I have a motion, please?
Motion to extend for a year beyond termination.
Second, Joe.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Good luck, Mr. Small.
Calling your next case, calling BOA 938-001, 48 Lakeside Avenue. Madam Chair, this will be their first extension. If we do grant it, it will expire on August 2nd of 2021. Name an address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Attorney Derek Small, our business address of 1 Thompson Road. We're here seeking a one-year extension on this matter. This actually was in litigation and it's just...
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Small. May I have a motion, please?
Motion to extend for a year beyond termination.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Have a good day.
You too.
Calling your next case, calling BOA 616-977, 25 to 27 Hillsborough Street. Madam Chair, this would be their third extension. If we grant it today, it does expire on September 30th, 2020. I'm sorry. September till 2020.
It expired last year? I'm sorry, Mr. Fortune, it expired last year?
I'm trying to get it right now. There was only 2020.
Okay. May I have the applicant's name and address on the record, please?
Yes, this is my, this is my Lamb developer at 21-35 Batch Elder Street in Roxbury.
Are we calling you?
Madam Chair, it did expire in 2020.
Mr. Lamb, is this on Hillsborough Street, what, 7?
Yes.
Okay. I want to make sure, I want to find out why are you here for a third extension?
Yes. This, this project is part of the Indigo Block project, which is one of six buildings. The prior two extensions, we were waiting for financing on an affordable housing unit project. We actually closed on that in around September 2020 and started construction in, I think, I believe it was November 2020. So this is one of six buildings that is in construction. We had submitted documents to ISD prior to closing, but when we went to pull the permit, it was told to us that they had not received the documents, so...
Okay. So you're just finessing the record. May I have a motion, please?
Motion to extend for a year beyond today.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Calling your next case, calling BOA 746-305, 48 Tyleson Street. Madam Chair, this will be their second extension. It did expire on July 13th of 2021. Name an address for the record, please. Is Tyleson Street here? I'll come back to that one, Madam Chair. Calling your next, calling your next case, calling BOA 843-335-42, Chestnut Street. Madam Chair, this will be their second extension. If we grant it today, it will expire on August 7th of 2021. Name an address for the record, please.
Okay, let's move on, Mr. Fortune.
Seem to be striking out these last two cases.
I know.
All right. So, Madam Chair, this is what I'm going to do for Starling and Toucan. I'm going to call all the Starling BOA number from the beginning to the end, and then I'll go to Toucan, and then we can go from there. So, calling your next cases, calling BOA 942-790-2, Starling Street, to BOA 942-815-17, Starling Street, which is 16 cases. And then go to BOA 942-816-2-Toucan Road, to case BOA 942-2825-14, Toucan Road, which is 17, which is seven cases. Name an address for the record, please.
Oh, Mr. Fortune, just to clarify, we did go up to 17 Starling, right?
That's correct.
Okay, excellent. Name an address for the record, please.
Well, looks like we're striking out again.
Mr. Fortune, when did these expire?
The expired, I'm sorry, Mr. Ehrlich, this will be their first extension. All the decisions will expire on August 12th of 2021.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, let's move on.
All right, we're going to have to come back to those three cases. Calling Board Final Arbiter, calling BOA 8116-0818, 53 Tindale Street. Name an address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chairman and members of the board. This is homeowner James Zigmund for 53 Tindale Street, 420 in Roselandale. We filed an application for a building permit in December to convert our one-car garage to an artist studio. We received approvals from the zoning board and the planning department, after which inspection services directed that we change the project addresses presented on the architectural plans from 53 to 53R, Tindale Street, given that the project involves an accessory building. The zoning board directed us to issue a written request to the Board Final Arbiter for a change of, for a change of address, which we did, and to attend today's hearing for the purpose of receiving formal approval for an address change for our project.
May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
First.
Is there a second?
I second, Barazza.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set. Good luck.
Thank you.
Calling your next, calling your next case, the Board Final Arbiter, calling BOA 111-258666, Alvin Street. Name an address for the record, please.
Tim Johnson Architect, 599 East Broadway, Boston, Massachusetts. Madam Chair, members of the board, this project was originally presented to the subcommittee on November 19th, 2020. Among other variances, a change of use was granted from a one-family to a two-family in this 1F-7,000 zoning sub-district. For various reasons, my client is respectfully requesting a change of use back to the original one-family status.
And does anything else, I'm assuming that everything else in the plan will revert back to the one-family status?
That is correct, Madam Chair. We submitted drawings to ISD showing the one-family layout, the planned layout.
Okay, may I, may I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Barazza, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, I'm not sure if it makes sense, but the person who was here for all the Starling and Toucan cases, he had his hand up, because we just didn't get to him, we're having connectivity issues with him. Did you call that back or were we?
Yes.
He said okay.
All right, Madam Chair, so obviously I called it into the record. Would I, you want me to do that again?
Yes, please.
Okay. For the record, calling case BOA 942-790-2, Starling Street, to BOA 942-815-17, Starling Street, which is 16 cases, and BOA 942-816-2-Toucan Road, to BOA 942-825-14, Toucan Road, seven cases. Name an address for the record, please. All the, this will be their first extension. All the decisions will expire on August 12th of 2021. Name an address for the record, please.
Francis, can you unmute Chris Tracy?
Hi, hi folks, can you hear me now?
Yes, please, go ahead.
Great, thank you. So, Chris Tracy from O'Neil &amp; Associates with a business address of 18 Tremont Street in Boston. We're here respectfully seeking an extension on the 29-home subdivision being built by CAD builders in West Roxbury, and that's Starling-Toucan Road. So there's 29 homes, 23 needed ZBA relief. We're doing two IDP standalone homes on the site. This was supported by the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services and...
Chris, Chris, thank you. May I have a motion, please?
And I will say, Madam Chair, because of the size of the job, we'd respectfully ask if two years is possible.
No, well, we just do one year just so that we can keep track of what's going on, because some of these maybe might be completed and you might not need relief for all of them. So may I have a motion for one-year extension?
Motion to extend for a year beyond a date of termination, which I believe is August 12th.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set for a year, Mr. Tracy.
Madam Chair and, and Madam Ambassador, before I go to the 930 cases, is Tyleson Street or Chestnut Street on for extensions? Can we sell and pay out?
Can you raise your hand if you're on for that case? Francis and I are on, I should send a message to her directly or myself.
No.
Tyleson Street? No?
Or Chestnut.
See the name.
Okay. Madam Chair, what would you like to do?
Let's proceed with the hearings.
I think you just said...
The deferrals.
Excuse me?
Let's proceed with the hearings.
Hold on a second.
The same guy, Chris, that he just said that I think he has 42 Chestnut. Just a message.
Okay. All right, so let's press, can you unmute him?
I'm sorry, I'm having a hard time here. Is Chris Tracy the person who's 42 Chestnut?
That's what, yeah, Ricky is saying. Francis, can you unmute Chris Tracy, Chris Tracy again?
Hey, Chris, are you on Chestnut?
Hi, thanks, folks. We're having a bear of a time with the mute button here.
Okay. So, hold on, Mr. Fortune, please read that.
Thank you. Calling case BOA 843-335-42, Chestnut Street. Madam Chair, this will be their second extension. It does expire on August 7th of 2021 if we do grant it. Name an address for the record, please.
Chris Tracy from O'Neil &amp; Associates with a business address at 18 Tremont Street in Boston, speaking on behalf of attorney Ian Ercard and the applicant Catherine O'Keeffe. This was granted for...
Hold on, hold on, Counselor. Hold on, Mr. Tracy, may I have a motion, please?
Motion to extend for a year beyond termination.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set. Good luck.
Thanks, everyone.
All right, Madam Chair, I guess Tyleson Street's not here, we can always come back to it after the 930 hearing. I'm going to call the 930 hearings for deferrals or withdrawals. Give me the address first, please, for deferrals or withdrawals for 930 only.
14 Scott Miller Street.
For the record, calling BOA 109-7311, 14 Shiler Street. Name an address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Attorney Matt Eckle with Drago Scano with a business address of 11 Beacon Street, on behalf of 14 Scott Miller Street. We are requesting a deferral this morning. We met with the community association approximately two weeks ago. We made some final changes and submitted those plans to ISD, however, they have not been finally reviewed yet. We're seeking a deferral.
May I have a motion, please?
Motion to defer.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The date, please?
We have a date of September 28th at 12:30.
Thank you very much.
Are there any other deferrals or withdrawals for 930?
18 Evans Street, Mr. Secretary.
Thank you. For the record, calling BOA 119-4924, 18 Evans Street. Name an address for the record, please.
Tim Johnson Architect, 599 Boston. Madam Chair, due to an impasse with the neighbors on certain aspects of the project, we're confident with a little bit more time, we can reach a compromise. Therefore, we respectfully request a deferral of our hearing if possible.
So you're not requesting it to the, to the board, right? Okay, so may I have a motion, please?
Motion to defer.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The date, please?
We have a date of September 28th at 12:30.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Mr. Secretary.
Thank you. Are there any other deferrals or withdrawals for 930?
Yes, Yoni, can you unmute her, Francis? Does she just have to?
What's your address?
Yes, perfect. This is Yonish Cahill with White...
What's your address, please?
Oh, sorry, for the record, this is for 5 Winston Road.
I need your address, please. Before you give me your name, just give me the address.
Yep, 150 East Central Street, Nadee, Massachusetts.
Mr. Fortune, it's 5 Winston Road. 1209...
For the record, calling BOA 120-9343-5, Winston Road. Name an address for the record, please.
Thank you. My name is Yonish Cahill with White Dega Properties, address of 150 East Central Street, Nadee, Massachusetts.
And why are you asking for a deferral?
We are, we are, we have been working with, we have been talking with the neighbors and we have agreed to lower the unit count and then change the project. We did update the plans, which we have submitted, but not, not, you know, only a few days ago, so...
And please, when it comes, comes back to us, just make sure it's a, it's a decent design. It's not just a, a, a square box or a rectangular box. May I have a motion, please?
Motion to defer.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The date?
We have a date of October 5th at 12:30.
Thank you.
Are there any other deferrals or withdrawals for 930? Madam Chair, we do have a case, H Street is being withdrawn, so I'm going to call them for the record, calling BOA 120-5518, 186-188-H Street. I'm going to make a motion for denial without prejudice.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Your applicant is all set.
Calling the first case for 930, calling BOA 120-7934-217, Lexington Street. This decision will include a rear deck exclusive to unit 30. The violation is Article 53, Section 9, the side yard is insufficient, and Article 53, Section 9, the rear yard is insufficient. Name an address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Attorney Lawrence Catino from Richard Lindsay's office, 245 Sumner Street in East Boston. We're here today requesting relief to erect a... We're here today requesting relief to erect a rear roof deck. If you can just scroll down a little bit more, you'll see what I'm talking about. The roof deck is not set to be on the topmost portion of the building. It would be on the level that the third unit comes directly out of, so essentially a rear deck. The two violations we're seeking relief on are side yard, we're at point three from the left, and we are at seven point two from the right, and the allowed would be two and a half feet. And rear yard, we have a thirty-eight point six foot setback, and allowed would be a forty foot setback.
So, Lorraine, is this new construction?
So the building is actually currently under construction. It's not new construction, it's a pre-existing three-unit dwelling.
And so why didn't this come in initially so that we could have looked at it comprehensively?
I'm sorry?
Why didn't this come in initially so we could have looked at it comprehensively?
The renovations were done as of right, they weren't changing anything, it's just a pre-existing dwelling.
Okay. How are the plans, Ms. Barazza?
Madam Chair, the plans are adequate.
Any questions from the board?
I'm, I'm a little confused about how could it have been as of right if now you have a side yard setback violation?
The building was, was not a new, it was not new construction. It's a pre-existing three-unit building that they will only do an internal rehabs on.
So the side yard setback is a pre-existing condition?
Correct.
So, so you're extending that, that violation. The part that I'm concerned about is the point three, because it feels like it might be too close to the neighbor. But let's, let's go ahead, any other questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board.
Madam Chair, I couldn't hear, what was that?
Support.
Madam Chair, I have three raised hands.
Okay, let's go.
Christopher, you've been unmuted, please state your name and address for the record, please. Okay, then I guess he was, Sonia, you've been unmuted, please state your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, my name is Sonia, I'm from nine Winston Road. I am a post of the five Winston Road, the four-unit building being built.
I'm sorry, we are at two seventeen Lexington Street?
I know, ma'am, when I raised my hand, no one called upon me and unmuted me, and I just sent you guys a message about that.
Winston Street, we'll hear, we'll hear it again in October, so no worries, okay? Come back in October. Okay, so let's-
I have no more raised hands.
Lexington. Okay, so given that information, may I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forth a motion of approval with a design, with a proviso of BPDA Design Review, paying special attention, paying special attention to the setback of the deck.
I'll second that, Joe.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, and I'm assuming, Ms. Barazza, it's the side yard?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Calling the next case, calling BOA one one seven one seven two five twenty-five Isabella Street. This is a converted existing church into twenty-six unit residential building. The violation is Article thirty-two, section four, this is de-cord applicability. Article sixty-three, section eight, the floor area, floor area ratio is excessive. Article sixty-three, section eight, the height is excessive, three stories maximum allowed. Article sixty-three, section eight, the height is excessive, thirty-five feet maximum allowed. Article sixty-three, section eight, usable open spaces insufficient. Article sixty-three, section eight, the rear yard setback is insufficient. Article sixty-three, section twenty, roof structure restricted district. Article sixty-three, section twenty-four, off street parking is insufficient. Article sixty-three, section twenty-four, off street parking design access drive in main. Article sixty-three, section twenty-four, off street loading, off street loading is insufficient. And Article sixty-three, section twenty-five, the front model line, building alignment. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. This is Secretary, Attorney Joe Hanley, McTermick, Qualti, Miller, twenty-eighth State Street in Boston, here on behalf of the proponent, whose principal is also with us, Ed Doherty. Also with me is the project architect Rebecca Berry from Feingold Architects, Alexander Architects. If I may, Madam Chair, just to note as well, as was read into the record, this project has been revised from twenty-six to eighteen units now, and that was reviewed with ISD's plan examiner and the ZBA prior to the hearing.
Okay, so just hold on a moment, may I have Christian on?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Christian Semenelli, Boston Groundwater Trust, and we have both the BPDSC approval and no harm letters.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, we also have the letter from Boston Water.
Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Hanley.
Thank you, Madam Chair. To, to give you an overview of the unique characteristics and land conditions here, as was read into the record, this is a conversion of an existing church property. It was built as a church back in the late eighteen hundreds for Our Lady of Victory's Parish, and it occupies essentially most, if not all, of the lot, which is a fourteen thousand five hundred and thirty-six square foot structure that exists today. You have in your packet a survey that shows this asymmetrical shaped property as well as renderings of the existing site. The Maris and the parish is long since vacated. There have been a few developers before my client that took a look at this property, and we have been part of an extensive process with the community and the BPDA. Yes, ma'am.
Can you go directly and tell us about what's happening within the building?
Yes, so the, the idea, the concept is for a residential, a conversion of the building to residential homeownership, Madam Chair. And the reason the project was changed from twenty-six to eighteen units was a part of the community outreach and also what we've heard from this board on other projects, and that is to provide large family-sized units in the downtown area, and also deliver affordability. So of the eighteen units, Madam Chair, that are proposed, there are eleven three bedrooms, there are six two bedrooms, and only one one bedroom, for a total of eighteen units. Two of those units will be income-restricted IDP units, one two-bedroom and one three-bedroom for affordable housing. The prior proposal was twenty-six units and then included eleven one-bedrooms, and only three, three bedrooms. So as you can see, there's been a responsive modification.
So did, did any of your violations diminish or are eliminated because of the change? Or did you maintain the envelope?
Yep, so the envelope, obviously, when you change the density, right, the parking requirement as well as the floor area ratio, or the, the percentage per unit for open space changed. And you'll see on the zoning regulations chart, if I could speak to that. So, minimum useful open space, which would be required under the code, is, is thirty-nine hundred, which is a hundred and fifty square feet per dwelling unit. We have nineteen twenty-two, and we're accomplishing that by private, small roof deck areas, as you've noted before, Madam Chair, to give these residences the ability to have open space and not be confined into small units. That's also a common characteristic throughout the district for roof terraces and private roof decks. So that open space requirement obviously was reduced by virtue of a hundred and fifty per unit. The parking, we are proposing eighteen parking spaces, which is, the code requires point seven total, but we are accomplishing this through a stacker and mechanicalized system. So we need design maneuverability, and access to that was carefully reviewed with BTD as well as with the BPDA as part of the early process.
Yes, this is exactly what we need.
Yes, ma'am.
Can you please zone in a little bit so we can see how this is going to work? So you have the garage, is this an elevator building or not?
Yes, yep.
It is, okay.
And so I have Rebecca Cooper, the architect, but essentially it is a, you know, it's a historic restoration and then a vertical addition. That's the program that it allows us to accomplish. And from metrics standpoint, Madam Chair, what you're, what you're getting is an addition of sixteen thousand three, three hundred gross square feet onto the main church structure, which is, as I indicated, fourteen thousand five hundred and thirty-six. So that gets repurposed internally, and then the addition puts the total building, Madam Chair, at thirty-nine thousand seven hundred and eighty-five square feet. And because it is located on a lot that is essentially takes, you know, the existing building footprint is essentially the entire lot, we need FAR relief, and there are a series of setbacks that relate to the existing non-conformity of the building that dates back to the eighteen hundreds.
Okay, so hold on a minute, how are the plans, Ms. Barazza?
Madam Chair, the plans are adequate. I do have a question for the architect.
Yes, ma'am. Rebecca?
Yes, Rebecca, if Rebecca can kind of walk us through access to the garage, I was having a difficult time understanding. I believe it's off Piamont Street, and I was trying to find the elevation of that, of that door, the garage door.
Could we, Joe, I believe, who's controlling the presentation? Sorry.
Madam Ambassador is, so if you just ask her to go to the page that you want, and I believe she could take us there.
And then the other question is, do you have any sustainability performance that you're achieving?
Certainly. Sorry, for the record, Rebecca Berry, Principal at Feingold Alexander Architects, our business address is seventy-seven North Watson Street, Boston. Thank you. If we go to, first perhaps, to the drawing page that's labeled A two, it's to show on the plan how the garage is accessed? Okay, yes, thank you. So on the right-hand side, you can see the ground floor plan. So the, the rear of this property, which is the north side of the property, is listed on site plan as Piedmont Street. This is an alleyway that is accessed off of Isabella Street. So all vehicular traffic will enter the building from that area there, you're seeing on the sort of upper left-hand corner of the plan, down a ramp, and then into the garage. Pedestrian access is largely off of Isabella Street. If you go then to page, A eight? Okay, so if you look at that elevation two, northwest AA, so that is the, that is the garage entry door there, which is in what we are, what we typically refer to as the northwest addition to the building, that is being constructed on the footprint of the former Vestry and Boiler Building, which are being demolished and removed. The plan for this door is to have it be a frosted glass entry door, so it will not be sort of a, you know, a blank garage door, which of course will also help residents to be able to see as they go in and out. There will be automatic door access with warning lights for both the drivers and pedestrians in that area. Does that answer your questions regarding access to the garage?
Yes.
Okay, excellent, thank you. So to move on to-
Yeah, go ahead.
The, the second question had to do with sustainability and our approach to that for the project, so two very important things to note, this is an all-electric building. We are planning on a heat pump system for HVAC provision. We are also looking at achieving better-than-code as far as the envelope, which is, we will note, rather tricky in the existing building because we have an existing master masonry building, and one has to approach that very carefully in terms of insulating the walls. So we are in the midst of finalizing that approach. We are in consultation with groups such as Simpson, Gunferson, Hager, to ensure that the building is treated properly for this, and so that we can ensure that the existing masonry, you know, the restoration of that will be appropriate, in other words. And then all of the new envelope, as noted, we are planning to insulate to better-than-code, and we're in the midst of finalizing all of our calculations for that now, under the new IECC two thousand and eighteen code and additional stretch codes, which are in place in the city of Boston.
Can I ask anybody who's interested in commenting on this project to raise your hands? But when we're ready for comments, we can just hear you without any issues. Can you talk to us about the roof decks? Are they going to be common roof decks or shared?
Go ahead, Rebecca.
Certainly, the, the roof decks are purely private, so there are four private roof decks for the four upper units, which we often refer to as the penthouse units, which are duplex units on, on level six and seven. So there are no common roof decks for this project.
And how are they accessed?
Those will be accessed directly through doors, so in other words, they are not accessed via hatch, because they are accessed from the seventh level of the building.
And the only basement space will be for garage. This is a handsome building, how much of that glass and the design will be preserved?
I'm sorry, Madam Chair, can you repeat the question? You were a bit garbled.
This is a handsome building, how much of the glass, et cetera, will be preserved?
Oh, certainly, yes. So all of the existing masonry will be completely cleaned and restored. All of the existing windows are being replaced, however, we are replicating historic Mullen patterns, which are, can be actually quite elaborate, particularly facing Isabella Street. So we are planning to install, you know, monumental aluminum clad wood windows that mimic the existing patterns again. This project has been reviewed a couple of times with landmarks, and of course, we will do proceeding with them following this hearing.
You know, the only model I have that looks something like this is the rehab in the south end, and I thought it took a very handsome building on the rear of the building and kind of remodeled it, and so I'm hoping that this will really be supportive of the neighborhood, which looks like it's, you know, primarily break and, you know, will support it in, in that way. Any other questions from the board? Is any, so anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Hi, yes. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Kim Pucile from Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. The Mayor's Office would like to on record in support of this proposal. BPDA did an extensive community outreach for this, and they received support from the Butters and from the Bay Village Neighborhood Association. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Anna Calderon from Councilor's Williams Office. The Councilor provided a support letter on this proposal. The Councilor would like to go on record in support based on a tough, thorough community process, and the proponent working closely with the Bay Village Neighborhood Association in efforts on tough modifications to the project, based off their feedback. As a result, the CBI group reported no concerns with this proposal. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Karen Foley, Councilor of Harvey George's Office, would like to on record in support of this project. Thank you.
Madam Chair, Secretary here, we do have letters of support, but we also have one letter of opposition.
Thank you. May I go through the raised hands, please?
Yes, I have three raised hands, Madam Chair. Sarah, you've been unmuted, please state your name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Sarah Rolhi, fifty-four Piedmont Street in Boston. I'm the co-chair of the Planning Committee for the Bay Village Neighborhood Association. You received our letter on this project. The Neighborhood Association voted to strongly support this project. This is the third developer we work with. We believe that this developer was very sensitive to the concerns raised by the neighbors. We actually feel very strongly that the, the issue you addressed with the Lucas Building in the south end is something that's been avoided here, there are significant setbacks, and the, kind of the former impact of the church structure itself really feels to us is what's going to be left of this project when it is done. Again, we appreciate that this developer is going to be transforming what is currently an abandoned and decaying building into a place for new residents, and we welcome the addition.
Thank you.
Caller number, caller number five, you've been unmuted, please state your- Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair. My name is representing the Carpenters Union. On behalf of hundreds of our Boston residents, I want to go on record in support.
Okay, and then I think we have a record here.
Madam Chair, I actually have one more.
Okay, let's go ahead then.
Okay. Marvina, you've been unmuted. Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, my name is Gina Potter. I reside at twenty-six Mallon Road in Dorchester.
Are you here for Isabella Street in, in Bay Village?
No, I'm here for Mallon Road, Dorchester.
Yeah, hold on, because we're still in the, in Bay Village. Okay, but thank you. We'll hear from you later. Okay, let's see. It sounds, is Hannah Parks Davis here? Because, and if she's, and if you're here, Hannah, this is your comment focused on Isabella Street? Yes, okay. So the question is, are the decks within the lot lines? I'm assuming they are, but may I have the applicant respond to the fact?
Yes, the deck there was in the lot line.
Okay, so given that information, may I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval with BPDA.
Madam Chair, Madam Chair, this is William Bernard Ducey from one thirty-six Arlington Street. I have my hand raised and I'd like to comment in opposition to
Okay, so please put your name and address on the record and let's hear from you.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. My name is William Bernard Ducey. My address is one thirty-six Arlington Street. I'm a resident of Bay Village in Boston. I am in a butter to the project. The proposed project is, is to be built in a Boston Historic District. It takes an existing peaked roof church and creates an eight-story box-like condominium. It violates the Bay Village Historic District zoning violations that were imposed to protect against excessive developments with height and density violations. Detracts from the design and scale of the Bay Village Historic District. It causes detrimental, and it will cause, if true, detrimental traffic, density, parking, light, blue sky impacts. As in a butter that is across the street from the project, our views of the city, which, you know, from our building will be negatively and detrimentally impacted. The project, most importantly, sets a very dangerous precedent that threatens forty years of Boston and Bay Village historic preservation. It imposes an eight-story project on a, on a, a neighborhood that has a requirement of thirty-five feet or three stories.
So may I surprise then? Is that, one, you're concerned about the height? Two, about the density? Three, about the design? And four, about the traffic?
And parking and
And parking, okay.
And impacts to our view and, and light and blue sky.
And lights and views, okay, thank you.
I've submitted, I've submitted a written opposition also.
Yes, thank you. So given all that information, may I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I would like to put forward a motion of approval with BPDA Design Review.
Is there a second?
I'd second that motion, Secretary.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Calling a next case, calling DOA one-two-zero-seven-four-seven-zero-six-oh-three Massachusetts Avenue. This is a change of arc from an office to one retail and three residential units to one office and four residential units. The violation of Article fifty, section forty-three, off-street parking is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. Attorney Laurence Patino from Richard Lynn's office with the business address of two forty-five Sumner Street in East Boston. Also with me on the call are the two owners of the building, Tariq Syam and Anthony Rossi. As you can see, this is a pre-existing building at six oh-three Mass Ave. It's actually a corner lot that's been recently rehabbed to fit with the more historic nature of the area. And today we're just seeking to change the office, to change the occupancy from one office, one retail, and three units to one office with four residential units. The resident, the new residential unit would actually be at the ground level where the retail unit was. It would be a three-bedroom unit, oh, just about twelve hundred square feet. And our only violation is for off-street parking. We would be required one parking space for the additional unit.
So tell us, so how, how far above? Let me just see, so it's in, let's see, the ground floor plan is where the retail was. So is it at grade level in the rear?
It, it is.
It is, okay. How are the plans, Ms. Barazza?
Madam Chair, the plans are adequate.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Yes, good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. Kim Pucile from Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. The Mayor's Office would like to go on record in support of this proposal. A Butters meeting was held by our office on May twelfth and no opposition was shown. They also met with the Chester Square Neighborhood Association and they did not oppose the project.
Ms. Ambassador?
Madam Chair, I have no raised hands.
May I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, have a great day, everyone.
You too.
Calling a next case, calling DOA one-one-nine-two-two-four-two-four-seventy-three Harvard Street. This is constructing two-story wood frame of two thousand eighty-eight square feet, four-family dwelling on a seventy-eight-hundred-square-foot lot. The violation is Article sixty, section eleven. A multifamily residential is conditional use in an enterprise protection sub-district. Name and address for the record, please.
Sorry, pardon me. I was five feet away from my computer. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is John Lyden. My office address is five-twelve Galvin Boulevard, Suite two oh-five in Dorchester, Massachusetts, zero-two-one-two-four. The proposed project before you is a four-unit, four-unit structure comprised of two one-bedrooms and two studio apartment dwelling units. It is to be located and contained within the Harvard Commons Development Area, which is located on the previous site of the Boston State Hospital.
Was this project before this board in the past?
This is a first look at this, this, this particular proposal. Harvard Commons Development.
Okay, so we know Harvard Commons. So tell us about the unit sizes on this particular proposal.
Of course. The units here are composed of two six-hundred-and-thirty-foot studios and two eight-hundred-and-twenty-one-foot one-bedroom units.
How many, what's the size of the one-bedrooms?
Eight-hundred-and-twenty-one square feet, gross living unit.
You know, this, this tends to be a, a family neighborhood. Can you tell us why you're proposing such tiny units and studios and one-bedrooms?
I can, of course. The proposal put forward was done in conjunction or pursuant to a land disposition agreement between Commonwealth Massachusetts and Cruz Development Corp. back in two thousand and one. The, that agreement necessitates that a certain percentage of the development on-site be reserved for mental, well, state health issues. These units are to be designated at sixty percent of, they're a hundred percent affordable at sixty percent of the agreed income. And they're designated for patients that are identified by the Massachusetts Department of Mental Health. And that carries forward the previous health care
I'm sorry, these are DMH units?
The, 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 the crews will become a vendor of DMH.
Okay, okay. And so given COVID, et cetera, et cetera, these unit sizes are still seen as, as, as useful for DMH patients?
As far as we can tell, there's been no, no statements to the contrary.
Okay, um, how are the plans, Ms. Barazza?
Madam Chair, the plans are adequate.
Any questions from the board?
Yeah, to the applicant, what is the long-term arrangement with DMH? Is there a, is there a deed restriction? Or is this a lease, what, how, and will it be permanent or for a period of time?
There's a deed restriction in place upon completion of the city of occupancy and subdivision of the parcel.
And is that associated with a time limit or is it open-ended?
It is perpetual.
Okay, thank you.
You know, we're used to seeing Mr. Peaster on this project. So, okay, and Michael Washington is the architect? Okay, is any other questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Don't say people chair from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We would like to go on record in support of the proposal. A community meeting was held on June fifteenth of twenty twenty-one where questions were addressed, questions, Mr. Sir, were addressed by the applicant. And we would like to go on record in support again for the reason for affordable housing being available to the, affordable units being available to the community. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Dustin Gardner, I'm half City Councilor under a Campbell's office. We would also like to go on record in support.
Madam Chair, I have no raised hands.
Thank you. One last question that I neglected to ask before. Is there any occupancy in the basement?
No, the occupancy is confined to the first and second floor. It's a two-story structure.
Thank you. May I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval with BPDA Design Review.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, members of the board.
Madam Chair, I don't know how we want to handle this because from the next nine cases, they're different addresses. They have different violations, but the purpose is pretty much the same. So what I'd like to do is maybe call the first three, Mallon, Rositer, and then Tomfo. I can call after if you'd like to do it that way.
Mr. Fortune, are these lots all connected?
I believe so. We'd have to ask the applicant that. I'm not a hundred percent sure, but it seems like they might be.
Madam Chair, this is Ralph Parent. I am on the development team. This project is with the Department of Neighborhood Development. They're on scattered sites.
Are these three lots connected?
No, they're not. They're, they're very close to each other, but they're scattered lots, all relatively close to each other.
Okay, so I'd like to take, Ms. Mr. Fortune, let's do Mallon first and then let's do the Rositer Streets together.
Okay, we can do that. All right, calling the first case, calling DOA one-one-six-six-eight-two-one-twenty-seven Mallon Road. This is a subdivided lot into two lots, erecting new semi-attached single-family dwelling, townhouse style, and propose one off-street parking. The violation is Article sixty-five, section nine, the lot area is insufficient. Article sixty-five, section nine, the lot width is insufficient. Article sixty-five, section nine, the lot frontage is insufficient. Article sixty-five, section nine, the foyer ratio is excessive. Article sixty-five, section nine, the building height number of stories is excessive. And Article sixty-five, section nine, the front yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Madam Chair, members of the board, my name is Ralph Parent. Fifteen-three Off Street. I have with me our architect, Rashmi Ramaswani. My partners and I have been designated by the Department of Neighborhood Development to construct affordable homes on their foreclosed land. These are vacant infant lots that once had homes and we're seeking minor dimension regulation relief. The specific home is a semi-attached single-family dwelling. We'll be working in conjunction with the Boston Home Center and this home will be sold as an affordable home. Thank you.
So tell us again, what is this? A semi-attached, single-family dwelling with one off-street parking? It's matching the design of the current building then? Mr. Parent?
Yes, you said this is
And tell us where, yes, and where is the parking proposed?
One, one spot, one, opposing, one parking space on each side of the building.
On the side, on the side lot, okay. Any roof decks proposed?
No.
Any occupancy in the basement proposed?
No, no.
And are any of these units handicapped accessible?
No.
No, okay. How are the plans, Ms. Barazza?
Madam Chair, the plans are adequate.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal? May I have Ms. Marvina Patterson on, please?
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board.
Good morning. Good morning, Madam, good morning, Madam Chair.
Marvina, state your name and address for your record, sorry.
My name is Marvina Patterson. I reside at twenty-six Mallon Road in Dorchester, Massachusetts.
See you next door. So tell us what your concern is about this proposal?
Okay, I'm directly across the street. My number one concern is about ten years ago, the city promised the residents that when they got ready to sell this lot, they would come to the residence. I had my residents take home buying courses. They took all the courses that were necessary. And ten years later, it was not, we were not provided a chance to buy the lot. As you can see, it is not even ready to be, for homes to be built on. We have a parking problem as it is. We know even with this, with this property being built, one parking space is not going to be enough. Okay, there is going to be visitors or whatever at this place that's being built. All right, driveways are going to be blocked.
Okay, so, so, okay, hold on. So can I, so, one, your concern is that there was a promise that was unkept? Two, your concern is about parking? Anything else?
The deed power is going to be, to be restricted. Okay, is it going to be rental property? Is it going to?
So you just need, you need additional information on how it's going to function? Okay, so hold on. In the meantime, is anybody here else here to speak either in support or in opposition?
Madam Chair, I have no raised hands.
Anybody from the Mayor's Office or City Councilor's office?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. We would like to go on record in support of the proposal. The proposal was supported by the Mount Bold and Betterment Association.
Don't they put your name in a, name on the record for us, please?
I apologize. Don't say people from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Again, the proposal was supported by Mount Bold and Betterment Association, which had multiple meeting, community meetings. And the Department of Neighborhood Development has been able to discuss with them parking issues, density issues, and they've been addressed on these calls. Thank you.
Madam Chair, sorry, go ahead. Madam Chair, members of the board, Dustin Gardner, behalf of City Councilor Andre Campbell's office. We would like to go on record in support, but also take in consideration Ms. Patterson's concerns and that the development team would really help local residents find a pathway to ownership of this home.
Madam Chair, Secretary here. We do have one letter of opposition. It doesn't give state, just opposing the project. But we do have letters of support as well. And I think it's throughout every address from what I can see.
Thank you. Ms. Ambassador, any more raised hands?
No raised hands, Madam Chair.
To, to the applicant, it sounds that you still, like you still need to do some community outreach. We would require that and request that you contact the resident at twenty-six Mallon, Mallon Road. um, um, the resident at, um, twenty-sixth Mallon's, Mallon Road, um, let's look at the BPDA recommendation, is that, that it be submitted for design review, and that any mature trees not be disturbed, um, so may I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, is it okay if I ask a question to the applicant, since we're going to see a couple of very similar projects, uh, this is for the applicant, are, are any of the proposed units that we're going to see, are they accessible, or are they all, you know, are they all inaccessible, the ones that we're going to see before us?
Rashmi, are you, are you on the call?
Yep, um, so this is Rashmi Ramaswani from Shet Studio, one thirteen Hampshire Street, one R, Cambridge, Mass, zero two one three nine, um, none, none of the, any, none of the units are accessible, um, these are all part of the D and D neighborhood, um, initiative.
So Madam Chair, I'd like to put for a motion of approval with BPDA design review, with special attention to accessibility.
So special attention to accessibility, and also on this particular piece, to the preservation of the mature trees?
That's correct, so two provisos.
Okay, um, and also, Mr. Pe, Mr. Parent, you will be in touch with the others, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Calling the next two cases, calling BOA one one six six eight one seven one fifty-four Rositer Street, there's a companion case, BOA one one six six eight one six twenty-nine Rositer Street, this is for one fifty-four, erect eight two, a new detached two-family residential dwelling, propose one off-street parking, and that, that's the same purpose on the next case as well, uh, the violations are different though, so this is for one fifty-four, the violations are Article ten, section one, the limitation of area of accessory uses, Article sixty-five, section forty-one, off-street parking is insufficient, Article sixty-five, section forty-one, off-street parking, design and maneuverability, tandem parking, Article sixty-five, section nine, side yards insufficient, Article sixty-five, section nine, lot area is insufficient, Article sixty-five, section nine, lot width is insufficient, Article sixty-five, section nine, lot frontage is insufficient, Article sixty-five, section nine, the building height number of stories is excessive, and Article sixty-five, section nine, the front yard is insufficient, this is for twenty-nine Rositer, as I said, mentioned, it's the same, uh, purpose, the violation is different, it's Article sixty-five, section forty-one, off-street parking insufficient, Article sixty-five, section forty-one, off-street parking, design maneuverability, tandem parking, Article sixty-five, section nine, lot area is insufficient, Article sixty-five, section nine, the foyer ratio is excessive, name and address for the record, please.
Madam Chair, members of the board, again, my name is Ms. Ralph Parent, fifteen Green Off Street in Dorchester, I have with me today my architect Rashmi Ramaswani, um, my partners and I have been designated by the Department of Neighborhood Development to develop new construction of affordable homes, uh, that is currently on their, uh, foreclosed land, um, these vacant lots were, these vacant infill lots, once had homes that were demolished, uh, received...
So, Mr. Parent, Mr. Parent, while you have the floor, can you tell us about these specific dwelling units, because we do know about the history of D and D and their requests for these developments, but please just talk to us about each project, so we get an understanding of what's actually going to be in the ground.
Okay, um, so there, there are various projects, actually, there's some single-family homes, two families that aren't...
So we only called twenty-nine and one fifty-four Rositer Street, on twenty-nine Rositer Street, how many, how many, what is the, what is the split, because this is a detached two-family, uh, is it a three-bedroom and a one-bedroom, what's the split?
Uh, Rashmi, can you please confirm this for me, because I have several of the plans out right now?
Yes, if you can scroll to the, to the floor plans, I can just walk you through them, um, just a few more, so, um, so you can see that this one, sorry, I'll get this call here, so, this is the tenant unit, potentially, so, there are two bedrooms on the tenant unit, and the upper two levels are the owner unit, and there are three bedrooms on the upper levels.
And then this speaks to, um, one off-street parking, but a violation is tandem, how is that triggered?
So if you can scroll to the site plan, please? Yeah, so that's, you know, we have a long driveway, um, with the intention that both the cars will park on that driveway, and that there's sufficient room for the two cars to park.
Okay, so it's actually for two off-street parking?
Correct.
Okay, um, and then again, um, it's the same question we had before, um, is, is there no requirement that accessible, handicapped accessible units be proposed?
Um, these are part of the D and D prototypes, they give us these units, and these have been pre-vetted, uh, with the neighborhoods, it's part of the RFP is, the unit design is given to us, and we implement the unit design, uh, I know John Farbach is on this call, and perhaps can respond to the thinking about accessibility, but the parameters that were given to us did not include accessibility, these are, um, three feet, two and a half to three feet above grade, so that's where the first floor is, um, so innately making them accessible is not part of the requirements, in fact, we have been required to locate the first four, three feet above grade, so.
So, thank you.
Madam Chair, that's, that's why I put a, a little special attention, because the intention is that these are one-off, but because we're seeing, like, three projects from the same developer, there needs to be special care that in the offering to the community, there's some consideration that one of these trees should be accessible, D and D does have a very good requirement, almost like twenty percent of accessible, at a, when they're larger scale projects, so I think that's why we need to just make sure that we look at this cohesively as a, as a group of projects.
Okay, any other questions from the board? Um, is, uh, is anybody here to be, um, to speak either in support or in opposition? I would also, Ms. Ambassador, if you could unmute John Foyabach, um, uh, after we've heard from the, um, city councilors.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Don't Say People here, and also Neighborhood Services, we would like to go on record in support of the proposal, again, um, applicant has gone, as well as Department of, um, Neighborhood Development has been in touch with, uh, community to, to register any, uh, concerns or questions, and it, it has been, uh, extensive process, thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dustin Gardner, I'm behalf of City Councilor Andrea Campbell's office, we'd also like to go on record in support.
Hello?
John, please go ahead.
Yeah, uh, can you hear me, Madam Chair?
Yes, please go ahead.
Yeah, great, thank you, John Foyabach, Senior Development Officer at Department of Neighborhood Development, um, I echo some of the comments said that, um, it's D and D involved D and D land, and an extensive, uh, D and D community process from the start, where we identified...
Mr. Foyabach, John, if you could tell us, because, you know, we've, we've seen many of these before, so we, we, we have the concept, the question becomes is, why are none of these units that, that are before us today handicapped accessible?
Well, I, I know the two-family and the first floor could be adapted to that, um, I can't give you an answer now, but I can certainly find, follow up with our Assistant Director of Design, uh, on the affordability of, um, handicap, uh, accessibility, um, requirements for the two-family.
Okay.
The other, the other point I want to make, Madam Chair, is although this and the other one, um, are separate, in fact, they're, they're part of the same development, Mount Bowden, Mallon, Neighbourhood Home, which totals thirteen units, for some reason, the I S D filing created separate, as he'd be adhering cases.
Yes, um, that usually happens when they're not all a-buddy.
Okay.
Okay, so, um, okay, so, given that information, may I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval with BPDA design review, with again, paying special attention to accessibility.
And I think on all of these, the BPDA also asks for recognition of mature trees on site.
I'll second that, yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Or any opposed? Motion carries.
Madam Chair, I think what I'm going to do for the next, uh, cases with Mount Bowden Terrace, all the way down to thirty-nine, and then eighty-one, I can call later, um, if that's what you'd like to do, so I'll call all the Mount Bowdens all at once, and then Bowden Avenue separately, call in case BOA one one six six eight one three twenty-one, Mount Bowden Terrace, if companion case is BOA one one six six eight one five twenty-four, Mount Bowden Terrace, BOA one one six six nine one one twenty, Mount Bowden Terrace, BOA one one six six eight zero eight eighteen, Mount Bowden Terrace, and BOA one one six six eight one one thirty-nine, Mount Bowden Terrace, for forty-one, this is subdivided into two lots, who are semi-attached, single-family dwelling, propose one off-street parking, the violation is Article ten, section one, the limitation of area of accessory uses, Article sixty-five, section nine, the lot area is insufficient, Article sixty-five, section nine, lot width is insufficient, Article sixty-five, section nine, lot frontage is insufficient, Article sixty-five, section nine, the foyer ratio is excessive, and Article sixty-five, section nine, the front yard is insufficient, this is for twenty-four, Mount Bowden, this erects a single-family residential dwelling, propose one off-street parking, the violation is Article sixty-five, section nine, the lot frontage is insufficient, this is for twenty, Mount Bowden, subdivided into two lots, erects a semi-attached, single-family dwelling, propose one off-street parking, the violation is Article sixty-five, section forty-one, off-street parking is insufficient, Article sixty-five, section nine, the foyer ratio is excessive, Article sixty-five, section nine, lot area is insuffi, lot area is insufficient, Article sixty-five, section nine, lot width is insufficient, and Article sixty-five, section nine, lot frontage is insufficient, this is for, for eighteen, Mount Bowden, uh, Terrace, it is the subdivided into two lots, and erects a semi-attached, single-family dwelling, propose one off-street parking, the same violation are for twenty, uh, are for eighteen as well, so I don't have to call that one in, for thirty-nine, Mount Bowden, subdivided into two lots, erects a semi-attached, single-family dwelling, townhouse style, propose one off-street parking, the violation is Article ten, section one, the limitation of area of accessory uses, Article sixty-five, section nine, lot area is insufficient, Article sixty-five, section nine, lot width is insufficient, Article sixty-five, section nine, lot frontage is insufficient, Article sixty-five, section nine, the foyer ratio is excessive, and Article sixty-five, section nine, front yard is insufficient, and Article sixty-five, section nine, dimensional regulations, name and address for the record, please.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Ralph Parent, fifteen Green Off Street in Dorchester, uh, have with me my architect Rashmi Ramaswani, uh, these properties, again, are part of the D and D, uh, NHI program, we discussed in the previous two cases, uh, they seem to have the same, uh, uh, relief issues, um, in addition, accessibility issues as the previous, um, Madam Chair, is there any specific questions that you would have, uh, relating to these, um, that we have not discussed on the prior two cases?
No, I think we're good, um, how, how are the plans, um, Ms...
Madam, Madam Chair, the plans are sufficient.
Okay, you know, I'm, um, kind of trying to look up Mount Bowden Terrace, but for some reason, oh, yeah, I got it, I've got it now, um, so, what, what my concern is, is that, um, specifically on this street, because of the volume of buildings being produced, um, will this end up changing the character and the look of that street, um, now that they're all essentially, you know, uh, pre, pre, pre-designed buildings, uh, and I asked, and I asked this of the architect, Ms. Parent?
So this is the architect Rashmi Ramaswani, Shet Studio, one thirteen Hampshire Street, uh, Cambridge, Mass, zero two one three nine, um, so in response to that question, it's a really good question, and the, the articulation of this building, you know, you can see in the floor plan how there are these various bay windows that jet out, uh, are identical to the other buildings, um, along that street, although this is a townhome, in, in essence, it looks virtually the same as, um, other homes in the street, so that's the first thing, is that enassing and appearance, it sort of fits in the fabric, um, and then in the eighteen-twenty Mount Bowden, uh, both eighteen-twenty Mount Bowden and thirty-nine forty-one Mount Bowden Terrace are the same plan, so they're identical, they all look, they both look like this, and they're both townhomes, but in the other one, we have, um, there is a very large mature tree that we have worked around, there are also, uh, major topography issues, there's a twen, there's like a fifteen-foot, um, grade change between the front property line and the rear property line, so, um, our location of the building, the articulation of the building, and the preservation of the tree, you know, when, when we did our first walkthrough, we had neighborhood residents come up and request that we be respectful of the tree, so we, you know, really tried to work around it, so, uh, in all those ways, our effort has been to, um, build it into the urban fabric rather than go against it, so.
Okay, uh, was that, uh, a good response for you, your concerns, Ms. Barazza?
Madam Chair, yes.
Okay, any other questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition to this proposal?
Anissa Santos from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, who would like to go on record in support of the applicant, they did the community process, and met with the associations for this area, so we would like to go on record.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dustin Gardner, I'm behalf of City Councilor Andrea Campbell's office, we would like to go on record in support.
Madam Chair, I have one raised hand. Corinne, you've been unmuted, please state your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, my name is Corinne Wilkinson, my address is forty-seven Mount Bowden Terrace.
Ma'am, are you in support or in opposition of this proposal?
I'm currently in opposition of this proposal.
Which one specifically?
Um, the ones, um, the ones that are, that are on Mount Bowden Terrace specifically, thirty-nine, uh, it's...
What, what is your, sorry, sorry ma'am, what's your concern about them?
Uh, we currently have, uh, a, a parking issue on this street, it is a one-way street in which it's narrow, and there's not availability to park on both sides, therefore, any housing that goes up, they're listed as off-street parking, but that currently is not even available as it is with the current owners and, and, and folks who live on this street, so building any new homes would take, um, there would be no parking available on Mount Bowden Terrace, it's not possible for a car to drive down the street with two, with cars parked on both sides, that's the main concern, is parking.
Thank you, ma'am, thank you. Anybody else to either speak in support or in opposition? Uh, may I ask, um, Ms. Ramaswani again, um, tell us about the parking and how the parking is designed?
Yes, so, um, I know John Farbach is also trying to speak, I see him holding up his hand, if, if you wouldn't please mind going to the site plans, I can explain the parking, there, um, whichever one you want to start with.
And is that parking, I looks like these are, oh, they're split on the odd and even side of the street, okay, go ahead.
So this one, um, both thirty-nine and forty-one Mount Bowden, the idea is that the driveway is long enough so that one car can park on the driveway, so that's the way, so there is, uh, parking provided, it's just provided on the driveway.
Okay, thank you, may we have Mr. Foyabach on, please, again?
Mr. Foyabach, you've been unmuted.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, uh, thank you, Madam Chair, John Foyabach, Senior Development Officer at the Department of Neighborhood Development, uh, we support this development and consider makeup land, one point in response to your, uh, your question, Madam Chair, regarding design, is we did a fundamental assessment of the streetscape, our Assistant Director looked at street context, and had in mind providing, uh, a number of design options at the start of the RFP process for residents to consider, and they were included in our test report.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, given all that information, may I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I would like to put forth a motion of approval with a proviso BPDA Madam Chair, I would like to put forth a motion of approval with a proviso BPDA design review. And again, to make sure that mature trees are protected.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set with those. Now the last one.
Calling the next case, calling BOA one-one-six, six-seven-nine-eight, eighty-one, Bowden Avenue. This erects a new detached, two-family residential dwelling, proposed one-off street parking. The violation is Article sixty-five, Section forty-one, off-street parking insufficient. Article sixty-five, Section nine, side yards insufficient. Article sixty-five, Section nine, lot area is insufficient. Article sixty-five, Section nine, lot width is insufficient. Article sixty-five, Section nine, lot frontage is insufficient. Article sixty-five, Section nine, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. And Article sixty-five, Section nine, the front yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record.
Madam Chair, members of the board, my name is Ralph Parent, fifteen Greenock Street, Dorchester, Mass. There's one-two-four. With me, I have architect Rashmi Ramaswani from Shet Studios. This project is a two-family, to erect a new construction, two-family residential dwelling through the Department of Neighborhood Development, Neighborhood Homes Initiative Program.
So you both are having a busy day today, huh?
Yes, we are, Madam Chair.
Okay, let's go ahead. It's, how are the plans, Ms. Barazza?
Madam Chair, the plans are adequate.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Anissa Santos, Office of Neighborhood Services, who would like to go on record in support.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Dustin Gardner, behalf of City Councilor Andrea Campbell's office. We'd like to go on record in support again.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I have no raised hands.
May I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval with a proviso BPDA design review. Again, just to also review issues of accessibility.
And the trees.
And the trees, protected trees, yes, of course.
Well, they're very mature.
Yeah, now they, I think they get it. And again, again, Madam Chair, my comment is really is to look at the whole project. This is really for DND, to look at the whole project holistically in terms of the amount of units that are being offered to the community, and to ensure that at least one of all of the offerings is accessible.
Is there a second? Or is that a second, Mr. Ollert?
Oh, sure.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Madam Chair, before I call the next four cases, it's now eleven oh two. I'm going to call the eleven o'clock case concerning deferrals and withdrawals. So if you could give me the address, if you're deferring or withdrawing the eleven o'clock cases.
Madam Chair, members of the board, my name is Kevin Clutier. I'm representing the applicant and owner of one-twenty and one-twenty R. Bellevue Street, scheduled for eleven o'clock.
All right, Mr. Clutier, let me call it in for the record, please. Calling BOA one-one-seven-seven-zero-two-zero, one-twenty Bellevue Street. This companion case, BOA one-one-seven-seven-zero-two-four, one-twenty R. Bellevue Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Thank you again. My name is Kevin Clutier from the Clutier Law Firm located at nineteen-ninety Center Street in West Roxbury. I'll be joined here with the owner and applicant, John Halloran, with an address of one-twenty Bellevue Street.
Are you requesting a withdrawal or a deferral?
Uh, a deferral, Madam Chair.
Okay, may I have a motion, please?
Motion to defer.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The date, please.
We have a date of October fifth at twelve-thirty.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, members of the board.
Are there any other deferrals or withdrawals for eleven o'clock only? There are none. I'll go back to the nine-thirty cases. Calling BOA, there's four cases, Madam Chair. I'm going to call them all together. Calling BOA one-one-nine, two-eight-seven-three, twenty-three Newton Street. There's companion case, BOA one-one-nine, two-eight-nine-three, twenty-three Newton Street. Case BOA one-one-nine, two-nine-three-eight, twenty-five Newton Street. BOA one-one-nine, two-eight-four-three, twenty-five Newton Street. This is for twenty-three Newton Street. This has changed occupancy to a three-family and renovate. Violation is Article fifty-one, Section nine, insufficient lot area per unit. Article fifty-one, Section nine, insufficient open space. This is for twenty-three Newton Street. This is to verify a current and proposed parking. Proposed parking for three motor vehicles and the rear of the yard. The violation is Article ten, Section one, limitation of area, parking area. And Article fifty-one, Section fifty-six, off-street parking design. This is for twenty-five Newton. This has changed occupancy to a three-family and renovate. The violation is Article fifty-one, Section nine, insufficient lot area per unit. Article fifty-one, Section nine, insufficient open space per unit. This is for twenty-five Newton. Current and proposed parking for twenty-five Newton Street, parking for five vehicles. The violation is Article ten, Section one, limitation of parking area. Article ten, Section one, limitation of parking area, side yard buffer and rear yard area. And Article fifty-one, Section fifty-six, off-street parking loading. Name and address for the record, please. I hope they're here. I just read them for the record.
I just saw them pop up. Should be Scott.
Scott's on as an attending, Francis. If you could just unmute them, Scott and Martyr.
Name and address for the record, please.
Yes. Scott, you've been unmuted.
I'm sorry about that. Thank you. My name is Scott Martyr. I'm calling with regards to twenty-three Newton Street and twenty-five Newton Street.
So tell us comprehensively, what are you proposing to do?
Sure. So, first of all, I thank you, Madam Chair, member of the board. Thank you for letting me speak today. So really, I'm not looking to change anything, just bring them up to code. So, right now, they're both actually three families, twenty-five Newton Street. There are no changes being made. Excuse me, twenty-three Newton Street, there are no changes being made to either twenty-three or twenty-five, only what is required to bring the properties to code, which would be to install sprinklers and a fire alarm. This part of Newton Street is a three-family zone.
So let me ask you then, which of the units are you looking to legalize, then?
Well, they're currently separated into three units each building.
I understand, but is it the bottom floor unit or the top floor unit that you're looking to legalize?
I mean, I don't, there's a basement underneath each bottom floor, so I'm not sure.
Okay, so is there any proposed dwelling in the basement?
There is a dwelling in the basement right now. Well, it's not a basement. It's it's a first floor, but there's a basement underneath it.
Okay, so is that twenty-three or twenty-five?
Both of them have a basement underneath.
And so there's occupancy in the basement?
Correct. Well, no, no, there's not occupancy in the basement. It's occupancy in the first floor.
Ceiling height in that basement?
About nine feet.
Nine feet, and what's in there? Is that bedrooms or what is it?
Sure, so both, first floor, both basement units have a one-bedroom apartment.
Okay, and tell us about the parking. Where is it supposed to be accommodated?
Sure, so right now, so really, I just want to back up. What I'm trying to do is just legalize what was already there. So the parking is already actually there, as you see on the plan. So it's already been paved. It's been there for, since the end of time. One thing I did want to point out is that twenty-three Newton Street.
Go back to the parking, you know, for us, this is a new case. It may have been here since eternity. But we do want to understand what it is that's before us that you're expecting us to approve. And we just want to make sure that everything from our perspective is clean and is supportive of the neighborhood.
Sure, no, absolutely. So could I just say, so for twenty-three Newton Street, it actually went Board of Appeal back in nineteen ninety-five, and all the work was, it was approved, all the work was complete, but the permit, they couldn't find in the inspectional services. So this just came up when I was buying the property and my lawyers did a search. So all the work was completed with this property in twenty-four.
So this is an investment property for you? Are you living here?
I live right next door. This is twenty-three Newton Street, and I live at twenty-one Newton Street.
Okay, okay, so let's talk about the parking. Just tell us, describe the parking here.
Sure, so for twenty-three, there's a long driveway, and then there are three parking spaces currently out back.
Okay, and then twenty-five, you're proposing five spaces?
So what I do is, you can park on the side of the driveway, and then there are three parking spaces out back as well. That's just currently how it's set up.
And is there any screening and buffering on this, for this parking?
What do you mean, is there blocking?
Is there any shrubbery or anything that kind of contains the parking spaces?
No, there isn't. It's one-hundred percent paved, the area.
Okay, how are the plans, Ms. Barazza?
Madam Chair, the plans are adequate.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Mayor's Office conducted a Butters meeting on June first. There were no concerns raised at that Butters meeting. The applicant went on to forward ten letters of support from neighbors all on Newton Street to Mayor's office. Went on to the Brighton Alston Improvement Association as well, and received their full support. We view this as an opportunity to update existing housing stock, and making sure that it's code compliant. Thank you.
Good morning, this is Maura Crey from Councilor Bray's office. The council would like to go on record to be in support of this project. Thanks.
Good morning, this is Annabelle Gonsalves from the Brighton Alston Improvement Association. We would like to go on record in support. And the neighbors are all in support of legalization, and just for clarification, the back unit is above ground. It is lower from the front, but the whole unit is above, and there is a basement below that unit. So there's actually four floors in this building.
So Annabelle, is that basement unit looking out onto just plain old tarmac and parking?
Yes.
It is, okay, okay.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Karen Foley, Councilor Savvy, Georgia's office. Would like to go on record in support of this project. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I have no raised hands.
Okay, let's just see. I'm feeling uncomfortable about a resident just looking at a parking lot, especially at this end of Newton Street.
Madam Chair.
Yeah?
Madam Chair, I'm sorry, Mr. D'Amico spoke on this. Can I put it on record, please?
Yes, please, go ahead.
He said, let the board know that the twenty-three Newton, he recommends that two spaces be approved due to lack of maneuverability. And a twenty-five Newton Street should only be approved for two cars due to the lack of maneuverability. That's what he said from the MC.
Okay, so let's get this fixed up. May I have a motion that reflects that? And also that reflects screening and buffering with BPDA design review for the lots.
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion for approval to change the occupancy to three-family for both property. And to just allow for two parking spaces at twenty-three and two parking spaces at twenty-five. And also with buffering.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that motion, Secretary.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Calling the first case, hearings for eleven o'clock. Calling BOA one-one-seven-three-seven-zero-zero, nine West School Street. This is a change of occupancy from sixty-six units of assisted living housing to forty-eight affordable income restricted apartments for seniors with services. The violation, the building will be used for forty-eight affordable income restricted apartments. The violation is Article sixty-two, Section thirteen, a use of regulation is conditional, elderly housing. And Article nine, Section two, change in non-conforming use. Name and address for the record, please.
Kevin Joyce, authority law office, fifty Franklin Street, Boston. Appearing on behalf of the petitioner, Affordable Housing and Services Collaborative, Inc. Very briefly, on the phone with me today is Mike Mattis, President of AHSC, and Jim Podolsky of the Architectural Team, our architect. We are requesting a change of occupancy from sixty-six units of assisted living housing to forty-eight one-hundred percent income restricted senior affordable units at Zellman Lacy House in Charlestown. The petitioner is an un-for-profit housing corporation and prospective buyer. Zellman Lacy House is a distressed, governmentally subsidized property on the verge of foreclosure. Over the last four years, Zellman Lacy has lost over four million dollars through operating deficits which have been funded by the current owner. Currently, seventy percent of the sixty-six units at Zellman Lacy House are vacant. The assisted living model no longer works at this location.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Councilor, how many, because that was part of my concern, is where are the balance of the people going? So what's the vacancy now?
Seventy percent.
Okay.
Seventy percent of sixty-six units are vacant presently.
Okay.
Assisted living no longer works at this location, although today's request may be unpopular with the Zellman Charlestown. It's the only way the Zellman Lacy House to survive.
So, I'm sorry, so this is going to be rentals or for sale? How is this going to work?
It's going to be rentals.
It's going to be rentals?
Affordable senior rental units.
Okay, and so there is no assisted living proposed at the ears?
Services, services are going to be provided, but it's not exactly the existing model. It doesn't seem to be working at this location. Services will still be provided to the residents, and they will be provided by, through the party providers, but overseen by the management of the property.
And suppose somebody does need additional assisted assistance in their living situation? Does the, does the proponent have a next step placed for them?
They, yes, yes. If it's determined that somebody needs something, we don't offer under new scheme. We will help place them and pay for whatever relocation cost that need to be paid for to get them in the program that's best suited for them and their need.
Okay, thank you.
It's very personal to the person that's involved.
Okay, Ms. Barazza, how are the plans?
Madam Chair, the plans are adequate.
Any questions from the board? Especially those of us who are heading towards this assisted living situations here. Any questions from them? No? Okay. Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board, this is John Romano from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This project had gone through an extensive community process. We want to recognize that they had also received a letter from the Massachusetts Housing Finance Agency in support of the proposal as well. And we recognize that the business has had some financial concerns and constraints over the current model, and that are hopeful to be able to address those with this new proposal. At this time, we'd like to go on record in support of the project.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Ricardo Patrone from the Office of City Councilor Lydia Edwards. Given the community outreach and the need for assisted living, the council cannot support this proposal. However, given the financial constraints that Mr. Joyce mentioned, and the financial reality that the Zellman Lacy House faces, she can't oppose this either. We would like to see as many of the current residents remain at the location as possible, and for the developer to commit to working toward making that a reality. We'd also like to see that to be led by the current residents, their family, and their doctors, and not by the development team. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Paul Sullivan for City Council at large, Michael Flaherty echoing the sentiments of Council Edward's office. The council to go on record in support. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I have no raised hands.
Any, Daniel Dees? Please, Ms. Ambassador?
Daniel Dees?
Yes.
I'm not sure.
Okay. Um, Mr. Daniel, it looks like he wants, he wants to.
Daniel, Daniel, you've been unmuted. Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Hello, my name is Daniel. I live on Tiles Street, the north end, and I just want to call in support of the project on North Marginal Street, the north end. I think it's a great decision.
Hold on, we're not there yet, so hold on. We're on West School Street, so raise your hand once we call North Marginal. Okay, so given this information, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval with BPDA design review, and also to. and also to advise the developer to take into consideration the exist, the current residents and to discuss with them opportunities to have them remain on the property.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Calling a next case, calling BOA 119-0262, 51 North Marginal Street. This will build an additional four units. In clarification, the change of occupancy from a private club on the second floor, garage on the first floor, to a six-story, four-unit dwelling, constructing four additional stories over the existing structure. Violation is Article 9, Section 2, nonconforming use change. Article 32, Section 32 dash 4. This is in the T card, groundwater conservation. Article 54, Section 18, uh, roof structure and building height restriction. Reconstruct, reconfiguration of existing roof profile. Name and address for the record, please.
Morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Stephen Miller, McDermott, Coltian Miller. I have with me, um, in person, Anthony Pizzani, who's, uh, architect, along with Bill Paquette, who's calling in and will do a presentation. Also on the call is Nick Suzulu from my office, who has worked on this project.
Okay, hold on, hold on, um, hold on, Counselor. Um, is Christian on this call?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Christian Seminelli, Boston Groundwater Trust. And we have both the VPSC approval and no harm, no harm letters. And, uh, nice to see you, Mr. Pizzani.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, we also have the letter as well.
Excellent. Uh, so Counselor, please go ahead and tell us what's being proposed.
Uh, once again, uh, Madam Chair, I won't bore you with the history of this, but we're, uh, proposing to construct, uh, a vertical addition of four stories onto the building and go from a, um, conditional use to an allowed use. Um, and this would be, um, a four-unit dwelling. And as part of that, on the ground floor, uh, we would include, uh, four parking spaces in the lobby area. We would have, um, two on units, on the first floor, second floor, third floor, two-bedroom, two-bath units plus studies approximately between 1,300 and 1,400 square feet. And then unit four on the top is a duplex, which is two-bed, two-bath, and a study at 1,740 square feet. Um, I'd turn it over to Bill Paquette now, just to, uh, give you a brief rundown on the proposal and the plans.
Uh, Counselor, um, and whoever's prepared to answer this. Um, so is there going to be any commercial space on, on this lot or not?
No, it's all residential.
And tell us how the parking is proposed to work?
Uh, the, the parking is, is, is existing parking on the first floor. There's an existing garage door, as you can see from the plans. So, um, we've, we've given, uh, four, four parking spaces, um, enclosed on the first floor, one for each unit.
And it looks like there's a proposed deck up there?
There is a proposed deck and, and Madam Chair, uh, have Bill Paquette kind of walk you through the plans if he can, he can address that.
Okay, let's go, uh, go on, Mr. Paquette.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Uh, we've, uh, already seen some images that show the existing photographs, the existing condition, and also our drawings of, uh, the existing elevations and, uh, what we're proposing, uh, to, to, to build. Uh, this is, uh, an overhead bird's eye view of what we're proposing. Uh, we're right next to a very large, uh, existing apartment building. Uh, on our right side is a, the shorter, uh, three-unit, uh, building and we're filling up our, or, uh, building in the space in between. Uh, if we could, uh, go to the next slide, please. Uh, well, we are, uh, this is again an over, an overview with, uh, shows how we've tried to hold the building and we believe we've accomplished it, holding the building back away from the, the windows of the abutting apartment building to try to, uh, uh, to the extent possible, not nudging it here with their light, uh, in their views. We haven't blocked any windows. Uh, the existing, or the wall around the perimeter of our lot, which goes right up in, in an acute angle to the, uh, abutting building is, uh, is an existing wall. Uh, we propose to remove its roof and use the existing, uh, second floor and, uh, build up, uh, from there using a new foundation. Uh, next slide, please. This is another view of the, of the rear of our proposal. Again, it's, uh, there are, uh, decks for the units, as required by the zoning code. Uh, we require 100 square feet, uh, per unit with, uh, 75% of that open sky. So, uh, we've provided that, uh, as a minimum to each unit. As you can see, we do not, uh, we do not block the, uh, the adjacent, uh, windows and the adjacent property.
Okay, hold, hold on, Mr. Paquette. Um, can I find that, Ms. Barazza, are you, how are the plans?
Madam Chair, the plans are adequate.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board. This is John Romano from the Mayor's Office, Neighborhood Services. We receive, this, this project has gone through an extensive community process. Throughout that process, they've received 19 letters of support and in addition, a letter of support from the North End Waterfront Neighborhood Council. They've also received a few opposition letters and an opposition letter from the North End Waterfront Residents Association. Um, at this time, we'd like to go on record in support of this project.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Ricardo Patrone from the Office of City Council, Lydia Edwards. The council would also like to go on the record.
Madam Chair, Secretary here. Uh, we have those letters that Mr. Romano spoke of.
Thank you, Ms. Ambassador.
Madam Chair, I have six hands raised.
Okay, um, let's get the, let's get the call-in user and, um, three personal people, please.
Okay. Kelly Frey, you've been unmuted. Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, my name is Kelly Frey. I represent the owner of the abutting property at 10 Thatcher Street. Uh, we've submitted a written opposition to this project articulating numerous reasons why we're opposed to it and why, um, the application as proposed fails to meet the legal standard necessary for the board to grant a variance.
So, let me ask you, so what property are you representing?
10 Thatcher Street, the building-
So, did, did 10 Patrick need relief from this board too?
Uh, um, did, I'm sorry, could you, uh, you broke up, I couldn't hear your question?
Did 10 Patrick need relief from this board too?
10 Thatcher Street?
Yeah.
Uh, 10 Thatcher Street was a, it's a historic property that's existed there since, um, uh, the early 1900s. It was converted to its current multifamily residential use, um, in the 1980s, so, um, I-
So, yes, probably. Okay, thank you. May I hear from a call-in user, Ms. Ambassador?
Caller number 16, you've been unmuted. Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, hi, my name is Damian DiPaola. I live on One Lafford Place in Boston's North End. Uh, I am a, uh, a resident. I'm a business owner and I also own property. And, uh, I am all for that project and, uh, you know, the, I've been following the process, so I'm not just showing up. And I've seen how they've done everything they can possibly do to make their neighbors happy. I've been to the Butters meeting and it was very, very positive. And, uh, elected council in the neighborhood, uh, North End Waterfront Neighborhood Council, I was at that meeting also, and they were in full support of it and, uh-
Thank you.
I'm all for it.
Thank you, sir. Can I add another question, please?
Ezio, you've been unmuted. Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, uh, I'm Ezio Susi and I live at, uh, 56 North Marginal Street. I actually own the property and I am a lifelong resident of the North End.
I'm sorry, do you, do you own the property at 51 North Marginal Street?
56 North Marginal.
Okay, so yes, sorry, go ahead.
And, uh, and I, I'm here to support this project 100%.
Okay, um, I'm gonna, I'm gonna close comment. May I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I would like to put forward a motion to approve with VPDA Design Review in that it goes, in that special attention is, uh, paid to the exterior, the garage door, the materials used on the top floors, the roof line and the lack of top floor setback.
Okay, so exterior, exterior work, roof line and setbacks?
And the top floor setback, correct.
Front setback, okay. Is there a second?
Second, Joe.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oh, any opposed? Motion carries.
Madam Chair. Madam Chair, John Pierrebeck wanted to speak on behalf of DND.
Uh, I think that was for the previous project, uh, Ms. Ambassador, on Bowdoin Terrace and Bowdoin Ave.
Okay, I apologize about that.
So we got it, we have it, thank you.
Calling a next case, calling BOA 120-3994, 331 to 335 A Newbury Street. This is a change of occupancy from retail to a cannabis establishment recreational. The violation is Article 8, Section 7, a cannabis established recreational use which is conditional. Article 8, Section 7, a cannabis establishment location shall be sighted at least one half mile or 2,640 feet from another existing cannabis establishment. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Kevin Joyce, City Law Office, Offices, 50 Franklin Street, Boston, representing the petitioner rooted in LLC. Brian Keith, Principal of Rooted, is on the call with me this morning as well. We are requesting a conditional use permit and variance from the buffer zone requirement to operate a conditional recreational cannabis establishment in 1,500 square feet of ground level retail space at 331 Newbury Street. The basement beneath the retail space will be used for accessory, non-public offices and storage. Proposed operating hours will be Monday through Saturday from 10 a.m. to 10 p.m. and on Sunday from 11 a.m. to 8 p.m.
So, Mr. Joyce, before we go anyplace, um, and this is a question we ask every applicant who comes in for cannabis use and is within the, within the 20, 26, 640, uh, buffer zone, feet buffer zone. What is the compelling reason for you to be there?
Because our, our applicant, uh, the petitioner, is a City of Boston social equity applicant. It's locally owned, all principals and 100% of the investors are people of color from Dorchester, Roxbury and Manapun. The investments range from $400 to $620.
So what, what is your concern? So, so, Ms. Ambassador, what I don't understand, I'm, I'm fine with all of that and I really honestly believe to my core that that's important. But, but, you know, for the fact of the matter is that we have a large city. We have lots of locations where this can be located. Uh, why are they, again, within a buffer zone?
I could, uh, I'm the principal owner, I can answer that question.
And put your name and address on the record, please.
Sure, my name is Brian Keith. Uh, address is 105 Mount Pleasant Ave in Roxbury. Uh, well, first and foremost, we believe that we are bringing forward a unique retail concept and business model that really differentiates us from any of the other proponents in the area. And customers will want to shop with us because of our core values. Additionally, it should be noted that in this area, which is one of the highest, uh, uh, revenue retail areas in the region, in New England, um, there are multiple stores that are replicated currently. Um, there are multiple areas to buy jeans, there are multiple department stores, there's a TJ Maxx, there's-
So, you know, honestly, Mr. Keith, I totally understand the retail piece of it, but the zoning that we are looking at tells us that there is a requirement for a buffer zone. We've always pretty much, not always, but pretty much respected that. Um, and so we still need to understand what is the compelling reason. There is nothing in the zoning that says that jean stores need to be located X number of feet from each other. But there is such a thing as a concern about the messaging or something like that that, that this have arrived in the zoning code. And so, so, so again, please talk us through this. Um, please talk us through this.
Ma- Madam Chair, can I just ask you a question?
Yes.
How far, how far are they from the nearest dispensary?
The closest, there are two dispensaries within the half-mile buffer zone. Um, one is, uh, they're both on Boylston Street. Uh, we would be located on Newbury's, on Newbury Street.
Madam Chair, didn't we, didn't we approve an establishment on Newbury Street?
We did.
So the, so the establishment that was approved on Newbury Street was this location. So this location, 331 Newbury Street, was actually the first location to be approved for cannabis by this zoning board under the previous- So we are actually changing this from medical, which was approved by zoning, by the zoning board, to recreational.
Okay, okay, so I, I, yes, so that will make sense, that makes sense.
Okay.
Um, and then, um, if, if, so when this was approved for medical, uh, did the applicant come in to change the use to recreational? And was that approved when they did that? Cause this was, this was through, uh, Counselor Ross, uh, from Prince Lovell, right? When it was first, first came in as medical, um, so when the request was made to change it to recreational a couple of years ago, I don't recall, was that approved or not?
Uh, I believe that was withdrawn. Underlying, underlying medical was withdrawn and then when they tried to change it to recreational themselves, TGI, they withdrew that. This was a fresh applicant for these applicants as successes and interest to GDI, which was the original applicant under the previous two, uh, iterations in the project.
Okay. So, uh, Mr., Mr. Keith, since you are going to be the potential, uh, so, thank you for clarifying that, that this was the initial, initial application because I think we all remember that fairly clearly. Um, Mr. Olick, do you remember that one?
Remember vividly, Madam Chair.
Yes, so, um, so this was the original case. Um, so you're, you're representing that on Newbury Street, there is no marijuana facility within, in the buffer zone?
Well, not existing. We would be the only, uh, cannabis business on Newbury Street, um, at 331, uh, Newbury. That would be the only one.
So have any been approved on Newbury Street within the buffer zone?
Um, there was, uh, there was an applicant who was approved by the Boston Cannabis Board, Ember Gardens, but they were denied by this board about a month or two ago.
Okay, okay. And then to ask you about Boylston Street. Um, where is, what is the cross street where the closest cannabis facility is on Boylston?
Um, could you give me a look? I can, I'm not sure, but I can look it up and take me one moment.
Okay. In the meantime, anybody who's here who's ready to speak either in support or in opposition, please raise your hands so we can get to you, um, in, in a timely fashion.
So, Madam Chair, just for a while, Mr. Keith is looking that up. When 331 was approved for medical, did they not, did they establish that business or not?
They did not establish that business. That business did not open.
Okay, it was approved but not open, that's what I thought.
Uh, and I have the information. It's, um, it's between Gloucester and Fairfield Street. And the other location is between Mass Ave and Pipswitch Street, or Hemmenway, Hemmenway Street.
Mass, and, oh, yes, of course. Um, and that's on Boylston, okay.
Correct.
Okay, so as far as location, you've, you've answered our questions. Now, um, you've answered our question on social equity. You've answered it on the history of the site. Now tell us about, this is a 1,500 square foot facility. Tell us how you plan on it being operated. Your, uh, I think Mr. Joyce gave us the hours of operation, but can you tell us, uh, what the security measures are and how somebody would win their way through the facility?
Sure.
and how somebody would win their way through the facility as a, as a purchase, sir?
Sure, the plans appear to be on the screen now. There's a whole, there's a reception area where, so first of all, customers would have their ID check at the front door. Then they would be allowed into the holding area. The initial holding area, they would go through another security screen where their IDs would be scanned. Then they would be released into the retail section of the store. That's where they would shop and determine what it is they'd like to purchase. They would go to the rear of the store where they have the cash registers and fulfillment. Fulfillment is where they would receive the product that they've ordered. And then upon receiving the product, they would exit through the same set of doors that they, that they entered.
Okay, and what's the capacity for the number of shoppers? And how many staff people are you anticipating?
We anticipating, we anticipate hiring 30 staff members for the entire store. Not that 30 would work all at the same time, but we would have 30 on staff. We do anticipate between 10 and 15, that would work for the day. And we would have six security individuals, one on the outside of the store, one that's a rover, that would be moving between inside and outside to offer support, you know, to individuals outside as well as inside. And then the remainder of the security personnel would be inside, including one person who would monitor all of the, about 24 or so cameras that we'll have between the exterior and the retail floor.
And how many shoppers do you anticipate accommodating at one time?
I think the reality of the flow is that we would see anywhere between 15 to 20 shoppers between the holding area and the retail space. And we would keep that flow, you know, as it is, we would keep it consistent if the flow is consistent.
And is the space handicapped accessible or not?
It is handicapped accessible for, for customers.
Okay, and then finally, is there online ordering for, for, proposed for this store?
Absolutely, there will be online ordering. And there will be, you know, it will be ready for them when they arrive so that they can come in and pick it up. We will not be allowing double parking. That's one of the things that we worked with the community to make sure that they were very comfortable with our proposal. We won't allow people to double park on Newbury to run in, grab what they're looking for and come back in. Anyone who, we'll have all customers sign a first-time purchaser pledge to be a good neighbor. And any violations of that pledge would see customers not being served. And that includes double parking, that includes littering, public consumption and things of that nature.
Thank you. How are the plans, Ms. Brazza?
Madam Chair, the plans are adequate.
Any questions from the board? Ms. Ambassador, after we hear from elected officials, I'd like to hear from Mr. Lafer and Ms. Meinzler Cohen, please.
All right, Mr. Lafer, you've been unmuted, please state your name and address for the board, please.
I have an idea coming up to having you on the chair of the Neighborhood Association Back Bay. As you might recall, we opposed this site when it was proposed with marijuana years ago. I think the work has evolved a lot since then. We opposed the site, the other side that was proposed on Newbury Street because the location it was in, this is a much better location. It's a block that's almost entirely commercial. And the operator has agreed that no work will take place in the alley. Their deliveries and pickup, including of cash product, will be handled from the front. And that will minimize impact on the residents. So, we are very pleased to oppose this. And we look forward to seeing this true equity case, equity applicant open on Newbury Street.
Meg Meinzler, you've been unmuted.
Thank you so much. I'm Meg Meinzler Cohen, President of the Back Bay Association. First of all, I want to thank the board for the decisions you've made so far. You've made some very wise decisions, both with your approvals and your declination. We are in your port of this application, we think it's an ideal location. The critical part is for us to have dispensaries both on Boylston and Newbury Street. And as much as I'm sensitive to the discussion about the buffer zone, this is a very well vetted proposal. We've been talking about this location for many years. We are absolutely thrilled with this applicant and this business moving into the Back Bay. And we would love and appreciate your support. Thank you so much.
Ms. Ambassador, any elected officials?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Molly Griffin with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. There was a community meeting held on February 23rd, 2021, attended by residents, community stakeholders and representatives for local officials. As the board is aware, there are many applications in this neighborhood. And we understand that residents appreciate the proposed location. And we recognize that there are strong equity applicants committed to creating jobs within the community. At this time, the Mayor's Office would be, would like to defer to the board's judgment regarding this application. Thank you.
Madam Chair, Secretary here, I have one letter of opposition and a couple orders of support.
Anybody here from the Counselor, District City Counselor's office?
I have Kennedy Avery. Kennedy, you're on, go ahead and state your name and address for the board, please.
Hi, Kennedy Avery from Counselor Bach's office. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Counselor Bach is in non-opposition of the applicant. The Counselor has expressed previously to this board that she has concerns about a fourth dispensary in the Back Bay that violates the half-mile buffer zone. Due to this policy objection, Counselor Bach is in non-opposition. But she does want to highlight the superior qualifications and commitments afforded in Roxbury as an equity proprietor, especially their proposal to build community wealth, address the Back Bay community's concerns and its location in a commercial district on Newbury Street. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, may I, I know there's a couple more people with raised hands. Let's quickly hear from them because, let's quickly hear from them, please.
Whitney, you've been unmuted, please state your name and address for the board, please. Elliot, you've been unmuted, please state your name and address for the board, please.
Elliot and Meg have already spoken, I think it's Jonathan that you're.
It's Jonathan, I apologize about that. Jonathan, you've been unmuted, go ahead and state your name and address for the board, please.
Thank you very much. My name is Jonathan Napoli. I am the owner and president of the Hempist at 301 Newbury Street, within a block of this proposed operation. And I wanted to express my firm support for this business and these operators, whom I know personally, to be responsible and competent operators. And I've been operating myself on Newbury Street since 1997 with a cannabis-themed business.
Sir, is your wife part of this team?
My wife is not part of the team, I mean, she's a lawyer that, with Vicente Cedarburg that might be representing this team.
Okay, got it. Okay, so you are in support. Okay, so, thank you, that takes care of everybody. May I have a motion, please?
Approve, with design review, do we need design review for signage?
Yes, and to this applicant only.
It's on Back Bay, it's not on us.
Yeah, so Back Bay.
So, it's to this applicant only. If there are seconds?
I will, you know, Madam Chair, I will second it, I just want to make a comment. This sounds like a terrific application that got a lot of community support. You know, I'm very disturbed about the buffer zone issue because it just seems like there are city policies being made, on the one hand, and being ignored on the other. I'm going to second this because of the support from the applicant. But I feel like we are, don't have much clear direction about what is, how to follow city policy.
You know, I feel comfortable, Mr. Olick, in that they are not like on the same street in proximity, that in fact it's, you know, aligned back towards Boylston that's triggering this versus a person's walking path or something. So, there's a motion, there's a second.
Either there's a buffer zone or there's not, but I will second this.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Fortune? I'm thinking that we probably need a break, but can we, it's 11:49. Can we go through the recommendations and get them out of the way, please?
Yes, before we do that, Ms. Brazza, could you clarify one of the cases before I call it into the record on Lockstead Street, please? I believe the board has approved with VPDA over an inside yard violation.
So, where is Lockstead Street on the agenda?
It's to the last page, Madam Chair.
Okay, so let's, let's do everything else and then come back to Lockstead.
Very good, very good. Okay, this was the hearing, meeting at 5:00 p.m., which was heard on July 22nd at 1010 Mass Ave, the floor. Case BOA 115-8994, 296 Princeton Street was an entry adding a green roof and playroom. It was approved with VPDA and no bedroom in the basement. Case BOA 114-1788, 1187 Saratoga Street was a correcting existing code violation unit by removing basement kitchen door operation. It was approved with no building code violation, interior connecting stairs connect to all building code regulations. Correct all building code regulations. Case BOA 120-2647, 89 Russell Street was finishing existing basement, basement created livable space. It was approved with VPDA, no bedroom at the rear of the basement. Case BOA 116-6630, 6 Wall Street. It was adding a new 20 by 20 roof deck, it was approved. Case BOA 116-4273, 2 Longwood Place. This was a new private roof deck for Unit 2, it was approved with VPDA, attached roof deck setback. Case BOA 118-4808, 10 Claremont Park. It was a constructed new steel balcony at a third floor level, it was approved with VPDA on exterior. Case BOA 116-6359, 555 East Fifth Street was a new rear deck and renovated to family. It was approved with VPDA with no bedroom in the basement. Case BOA 1200790, 707 East Fourth Street was a proposed new roof deck built off top level, Unit 2. It was approved with VPDA to the rear setback of the deck. Case BOA 119-1538, 10 St. Margaret Street, confirmed an existing single family that had a third floor roof deck, second story addition, it was approved with VPDA and eliminate the side yard violation. Case BOA 117-3224, 169O Street, new decking, green pergola. It was approved with VPDA, attached to setback of the deck. Case BOA 117-5313, 2 to 4 Wacala Street was extend the first floor living space into the basement to accommodate, it was approved with VPDA. Case BOA 117-4564, 59 Chikatahbit Street was a renovation of a second floor unit, including relocation of kitchen and bathroom, approved with VPDA on exterior. Case BOA 118-4796, 12 R Plain Street, it was deferred to the full board of September 28th, 2021 at 12:30. Case BOA 117-0623, 95 Wilmington Avenue, constructed dormer, installed new windows. It was approved with VPDA, the roof line and dormer setback. Case BOA 107-4615, 6 Warman Park, with rehab of an existing basement, it was approved. Case BOA 116-7558, 22 Sedwick Street, constructed new dormer on the right side. It was approved with VPDA, the size of dormer into the ridge. Violation's article, sorry. Case BOA 117-6936, 54 Dance Fourth Street, it was a dormer with a bathroom, it was approved. Case BOA 116-5245, 41 to 41A Green Street. It was a installing new deck, was approved with VPDA on exterior deck. BOA 118-4652, 4 Cuthbert Road, constructed 14 by 20 family room, was approved with VPDA. Case BOA 119-1994, 49 Mark Street, a master bathroom addition above the existing sunroom. It was approved with VPDA on exterior. Case BOA 111-118-3614, 61 Oakland Street, it was a dormer on both sides. It was approved with VPDA. Case BOA 119-7685, 111 Arlington Street, it was an addition of the rear of the house, a new master suite, it was approved with VPDA. And Madam Chair, we just have to go back to Case BOA 116-5935, 56 Lockstead Avenue.
Okay, so for these cases, all of these that have been called formally into the record, may I have a motion, please?
Motion to curate the recommendations of the subcommittee.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So, Ms. Brazza, let's go back to 56 Lockstead Avenue. This was to increase the size of the existing deck. And so we just need to clarify what the provisos are.
Correct, so I had a chance to look over the drawings and the proviso is VPDA design review with a five-foot setback, side yard setback.
Five-foot side yard setback? Is there a second?
I'll second that, Madam Chair, Secretary.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. It is now almost noon. The board will adjourn and will reconvene at 12:15.
Before we get started, let me just take a moment to take a roll call. Mr. Fortune?
I'm here, Madam Chair. You haven't left yet.
Okay, Mr. O'Leary.
Right behind Mr. Fortune.
Mr. Rogirio.
I'm here as well.
John, go as fast as I can, Joe.
Yeah, no, no.
Ms. Dong.
Present.
Ms. Marazo.
Here.
Ms. Mr. Kandell. Okay, please let us know when Mr. Kandell is on. Mr. Hampton.
I'm still here as well.
Okay, okay, so let us know when Mr. Kandell is on and in the meantime, we need to acknowledge that this is a six-member board. We will need five members in support of your proposal. So let's go ahead and make sure that that's comfortable with the first applicant on trouble.
Madam Chair, I'm going to call the next four cases in. Calling BOA 118-3042, 16 Preble Street. There are three companion cases, BOA 118-3040, 16 Preble. Case BOA 118-3045, 18 Preble, and BOA 118-3050, 18 Preble Street. This is for 16. This is install a roof deck for access from a hatch. Roof deck exclusive to the top floor unit. The violation is Article 13, 13 dash one. The building height max allowed is 40 feet. The proposed deck hatch exceeds 40 feet. Article 16, Section 8, restricted roof structure district, the head house is to be removed. Roof deck area proposed, including the hatch, is 371 square feet. Allowed is only 330, 330 square feet. This is for 16 Preble to install the roof deck. This is building code, the ninth edition, 780 CMR 1011. Article 10 11.12, access to the occupied roof in buildings four stories or more shall be through a penthouse. This is for 18 Preble, install a roof deck to the access from the roof hatch. Sorry. Went ahead of myself, yeah. The Article 13, Section 1, the building has excessive in feet. And for 18 Preble on building code, this is ninth edition, 780 CMR, stairways 10 11.12.2, roof access. Where a stairway is provided to a roof, access to the roof shall be provided through a penthouse, complying with Section 15.1, 1.2, 2.2. Name an address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is George Moranci. I'm an attorney with the business address at 350 West Broadway in South Boston. And if this is still a six-member board, I would like to proceed.
Yes, it is. So please go ahead.
Thank you. Madam Chair, members, I represent Cedarwood Development and its principals, David Winnick and David Mateo, who own both of these buildings.
Mr. President, please.
Yep.
Two seconds.
Certainly.
The council needs to talk to...
Madam Chair, was this, this is a seven-member board? Greg, Joe is still here? Are we missing someone else?
I'm sorry, I cannot, I cannot hear this.
Sorry, Madam Chair, this is Tom. This is a six-member board or a seven-member board?
It's a six-member board unless Mr. Kandell has rejoined us.
I was thinking, oh, you know where the call?
I'm sorry?
Oh, you're correct, yeah. Call him, call him, Madam Chair. I don't see that answer.
Yeah, okay, so let's proceed. Mr. Moranci.
Thank you. My clients own both buildings. These are two separate buildings. 16 Preble is a seven-unit building. 18 Preble is a five-unit building. The applications are to erect on the roof of each building, one roof deck, which would be a private roof deck for one of the top floor units in each building only. In the case of 16 Preble, that would be for Unit 7. In the case of 18 Preble, that would be for Unit 5. Access would be by hatch in each case. The roof decks are sized in, on 16 Preble, approximately 19 by 13 feet. And for 18 Preble, approximately 15 feet by 15 feet.
Okay, can we get to the building code, please, first? Ms. Marazo, this is to replace access through, to, with a hatch rather than a head house. May I have a motion for approval?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So here we get to the basic issue of removing that head house and replacing it with a deck. How are the plans, Ms. Marazo?
Madam Chair, the plans are adequate.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Hi, Madam Chair, members of the board. Haley Dillon, Mayor's Office, Neighborhood Services, like to go ahead and support. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Anna Calderon from Councilor Flynn's office. The council would like to go on record to support based on the work the proponent did with the others and Andrew Square Civic Association and good faith compromises made. The feedback we received from the Civic Association and neighbors indicated they were satisfied their concerns would be addressed with control, controls in all related to ours and no use after 10 p.m., noise barriers, limits on number of occupants, cameras and no use of firepits or reels in the interest of public safety. The neighbors and Civic Association support this project based on these measures, which they believe will deter the type of problem property behavior we witness during the pandemic. Councilor Flynn supports based on this work and feedback from neighbors and the Andrew Square Civic Association. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Karen Foley, Councilor of Harvey Georgie's office, would like to echo the sentiments of Councilor Flynn's office and support this project. Thank you.
Madam Chair, no raised hands. Thank you.
May I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval with BPDA Design Review.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Madam Chair, it's Jeff.
Yes.
Is George still on the line?
I am, Jeff.
Are these built?
The decks? No.
Yeah.
No, this is a, no, the decks aren't, aren't built, Jeff.
Okay, just because I know this was before the board about a year ago.
Yeah, this is, this is...
Yeah, that was, I'm sorry.
This is clearing up the issue, so we have a motion, we have a second.
Okay.
It's passed. I just also want to acknowledge that Mr. Kandell is back, so we have a seven-member board. May we have the next case, please?
Sure, Madam Chair. Calling the next two cases, calling BOA 1209-559, 1426 Columbia Road. There's a companion case, BOA 1209563, 1428 Columbia Road. This is for 1426. Did we build the house completely, including after a fire? The violation is Article 9, Section 1, reconstruction extension of a non-conforming building. Article 68, Section 8, the floor day ratio is excessive. This is for 1428. This is to rebuild the house completely after a fire. The violations are also the same. Name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is George Moranci. I'm an attorney with the business address at 350 West Broadway in South Boston. For the record, these aren't strictly speaking companion cases. They're two separate properties with two separate owners. In the case of 1426 Columbia Road, the owner and my client is Geraldine Palaluski. And in the case of 1428 Columbia Road, the owner and my client is William Kylie. However, both properties share the same history in the sense that they were virtually completely destroyed in a seven-alarm fire in May of 2020, which involved seven buildings in total in this area. These applications are to reconstruct the buildings as three-story, three-family buildings. The key distinctions between what is being proposed and what existed and is being replaced is that each building had a basement that was non-habitable, no, no living space before the fire. Each building and each application seeks to extend, extend living space to the basement. I'm looking at the plans there, the proposed unit floor plan on, on the screen, which shows a front bedroom in Unit 1, which was eliminated on a revised plan. And I'll speak to that and the reason why. There is still proposed to be in each building a rear bedroom. The rear of the building, because of the grade change, is fully at grade. And there's actually a door. It's a full walkout. Sheet A 2.2 shows the condition from the rear, which is identical to both buildings, which shows that, again, because of the grade change, there is, it is a full walkout unit in the rear, where it is proposed that for each building, there will be one bedroom located in the rear.
Mr. Moranci, can you clarify, please? What was the occupancy prior to the fire? And is that occupancy being maintained now?
Yes, they're, they're, they're both are and were three-story, three-family dwellings. There are three two-bedroom units as proposed in each building. For 1426, the, there would be three two-bedroom units of just under 1,300 square feet each. 1428, it would be the same case. And also being proposed for each building is a roof deck. In the case of 1426, access to that roof deck, which would be the top floor unit only, is from an exterior spiral staircase off the rear porch. 1428 Columbia Road had an existing head house. And the reconstruction involves rebuilding that existing head house to identical dimensions with also a roof deck on 1428. So those are the differences, the extension of living space into the basement, which increased the FAR, and then the two roof decks, which are compliant because they're hatch accessed.
Okay, so, so I'm trying to get, so Unit 1 is essentially described as a two-bedroom unit entirely in the basement?
No, it's a two-bedroom unit. One bedroom's on the first floor, and one bedroom is on the second floor in the rear. Each is a two-bedroom unit.
Okay.
If, we could go to Sheet A 2.2, I think it's instructive, because it's a, it's an elevation from the rear that shows the existing walkout condition in the back of the, this, 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 yeah, this elevation shows the rear.
And is this proposal proposing to eliminate that front bedroom, the street-side bedroom?
Yes. In fact, revised plans were submitted a couple of weeks back, Madam Chair, but these, these are the original plans. When the plans, you know, to be perfectly frank from the board, when the plans were presented to me, I believed that because the front bedroom appeared to be substantially below grade and required an escape window, I did not think it was approvable. I instructed my client that that building would need, that that bedroom, in each case, would need to be removed. I did have updated plans reflecting that, but unfortunately, it's not what the plans were looking at. But, you know, one would be a bi-level unit.
Hold on, Mr. Moranci. Hold on, Mr. Moranci. Ms. Marazo, do you have the updated plans?
In front of me, I do not. I was actually going to ask about the roof deck, because the drawings that I have in front of me don't show the roof deck. It only shows the roof hatch.
I think one of them has a hatch and one of them has a head house. 1428 should have the head house.
Okay.
Sheet A 1.2, in each, in the case of each plan set, could show the roof deck, certainly on, on my, on my copies.
My apologies, I had 1426 in front of me.
Okay, sorry.
Okay, so how are the plans? Are you comfortable with the plans?
The plans are adequate. The plans are adequate. I do, I do have a couple of questions.
Go ahead.
So, in terms of, in terms of the egress, the common, the common passage, do you have an easement to build over the common passage? Can you hear me?
I'm sorry, I was muted. I muted myself. The, the rear passage, my understanding is that the fee interest in the land, you know, extends into the, into the passage area. The decks were there prior to the fire, and had been there for, again, approximately, maybe 100 years.
Okay, so, you know, I wouldn't want to recreate a situation that would be hazardous. What is the clearance between the proposed deck and your neighboring properties?
I don't see it on either site plan. As I say, the, the, if, if we go to the site plan, which is the first page of each plan set, the fee interest in the land actually encompasses that common passageway. I know your question, though, is what is the distance from the deck structure to the property?
Correct.
To the rear, which is the Douglas Street address.
On Google Earth, I'm seeing literally the back of decks right adjacent to another property. And then, and then I see the passageway. So at the rear, is there any clearance? You know, is it, is it, is the other structures built right behind the deck?
So, again, I'm looking now at 1426 and 1428, and it appears to me that, and I'm on, I'm on Google Earth as well, the buildings at 1430 and 1432 Columbia Road are right up to a passageway, and it looks to be several feet, maybe eight or 10 feet distance between them, the rear of those buildings and the side of the building at, on Douglas Street, which is at 9 Douglas, on, which was also part of the fire, by the way. It's one of the seven buildings that was essentially consumed. 1426 and 1428, 1428 is, backs up onto the, the rear yards, open rear yards of the Douglas Street buildings. And then at the rear of 1426, again, there is another, there's a passageway that appears to be maybe, again, maybe 10 to 10 feet separation distance between the rear of the property lines.
Okay, I don't have any further questions.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Hi, Madam Chair, members of the board. Haley Dillon, Mayor's Office, Neighborhood Services, would like to go ahead and support of this proposal. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Anna Calderon from Councilor Flynn's office. The council would like to go on record in support of the review following the fire. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board. Paul Sullivan of the Office of the Council, Judge Michael Flaherty. The council's approach to Article 68 has been consistent. However, there are times that these variants are sought to be considered as substantial hardship. In this case, the homes were destroyed by fire, and the owners are seeking to rebuild their homes. Therefore, he would defer to the board's knowledge and wisdom for understanding and interpreting the zoning laws as it pertains to unnecessary and unintentional hardships. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I have no raised hands.
Okay, given that information, may I have a motion, please?
Oh, my apologies. Madam Chair, I would like to put forward a motion with two proviso. One is that you have BPDA Design Review, and two, that the Boston Fire Department reviewed the exterior deck on the common passageway to access building, building access.
I'll second that.
Anybody, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carry.
Thank you.
Let's start with those provisos. Mr. Moranci.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, we have a similar situation. We had the 9:30 with Senator Bowling Circle. So they're all different, square footage and violation-wise. So I don't know how you want to handle it. We can do all of them all at once, and then take each one at address. Snowden's the only one that's a different address.
Okay, let's just see. Is the applicant on?
Yes. Morning, Madam Chair.
I just want to make sure that Ms. Marazo, are they similar in design?
Yes.
Okay. And, okay, so let's, let's read all of them.
Madam Chair, I'm sorry, the only, the only thing that I did notice is that 35 Senator Bowling is proposing a full living unit in the basement.
Okay. Okay, so, so Mr. Fortune, please read all of them to the record.
Very good. For the record, calling BOA 119-1388-11, Senator Bowling Circle. There are companion cases, BOA 119-1398, 35 Senator Bowling Circle, BOA 119-1391-24, Senator Bowling Circle. Case BOA 119-1393-27, Senator Bowling Circle, and BOA 119-2361, 30 Snowden Way. This is for 11 Senator Bowling Circle. Construct a two-story wood frame, 2,088 square foot, single-family dwelling on a 5,655 square foot lot. The violation is Article 60, Section 11. Detached single-family dwelling is a conditional use. This is for 35 Senator Bowling, constructing two-story wood frame, 2,133 square feet, single-family dwelling on a 7,015 square foot lot. The use is, the violation is the same. This is for 24 Senator Bowling Circle. It's for a constructed two-story wood frame, 2,268 square foot, single-family dwelling on a 7,015 square foot lot. The violation is the same as well. This is for 27 Senator Bowling Circle. This is a constructed two-story wood frame, 2,300 square feet, single-family dwelling on an 8,165 square foot lot. The violation is the same. This is for 30 Snowden Way, a constructed two-story wood frame, 2,100 square foot, single-family dwelling on a 7,925 square foot lot. The violation is Article 60, Section 11. Detached single-family dwelling. In Article sixty, section twelve, the front yard is insufficient. Name an address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. John Leiden, on behalf of Cruz Development. Uh, my address is five twelve Galvin Boulevard in Dorchester, Massachusetts, oh, zero-two-one-two-four. It's nice to see you all again.
Okay, so, um, tell us why these proposals are coming through as detached, single-family dwellings?
Sure.
Is that the general sense of the, of the construction in that development?
Yes.
Yes.
These units are the last five remaining units on a ninety-nine unit development that was approved in two thousand six, uh, on the site of the old Boston State Hospital. Um, those units have been constructed on a phased development, uh, in conjunction with an as-sold provision as well. So, each unit as constructed within the phase was sold off. Financing was then granted to subsequent units, et cetera. This has been happening since, uh, two thousand six. Uh, in two thousand eighteen, the, uh, these permits had been, up until two thousand eighteen, these permits had been extended continuously. Uh, however, for reasons, I don't know if it's worth going into, but for reasons there was, they, they decided to not be extended and we had to reapply and that's what we're doing today.
That's right, because we wanted to make sure that in fact only live projects were before us, rather than the whole kit and caboodle.
Understood.
Okay, so, so these are, uh, tell you, um, Ms. Barazza did tell us they were of similar design, but please walk us through and tell us if there are, if there's any dwelling proposed in the basement or any living space in the basement on any one of these units. And finally, thirty Snowden has a front yard violation. Uh, what, what is required and what is being proposed?
All right, um, if it's all right, I'll start with the lowest numerate, uh, lowest number on Senator Bowling Circle and move upwards. Uh, so that would be eleven Senator Bowling Circle. Here, it's a two-story wood-framed, two hundred eighty-eight square foot, single-family dwelling. There is a proposed development, I'm sorry, a bedroom in the basement on this unit. It is serviced by a window well, um, a six-foot window well. And there is a bathroom as well in that area. Just to walk back a second, all the, all the units are similar in their style and construction. They differ on the nuanced architectural elements. Um, thirty-five has Snowden and eleven are the only two units that have a bedroom area in the basement.
Okay, and what's the front yard violation on Snowden?
Oh, skip me over to Snowden, the front yard violation is, um, the proposed, um, setback on Snowden Way is fifteen feet and one-half of one inch. Uh, the requirement is twenty foot, twenty feet. Uh, in the, that, that parcel is a corner parcel, it's concave in nature. So, it's somewhat uniquely shaped compared to all the adjacent parcels, which are rectangular. Um, the existing building alignment allowed us to avoid the violations for front yard setback on almost all the other proposals, but this does not meet the EVA by two inches.
And, um, can you tell us are these all market rate or any percentage of them affordable?
These, these five are marketed.
Okay, um, so Ms. Barazza, um, um, we have it on the record which units have basement. Uh, how are the plans?
The plans are adequate.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Um, John F. Peoples here from the Office of Neighborhood Services. Um, we would like to go on record in support of the proposal here. Um, a community meeting was held on June fifteenth of two thousand twenty-one where abutters and community questions were answered and addressed and no major concerns had come up. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Dustin Gardner, on behalf of City Council, Andre Kimmels' office. We'd also like to go on record in support.
Hey, Madam Chair, I have no raised hands.
Okay, um, may I have a motion? It sounds like twenty-four, uh, twenty-seven and thirty Snowden Way might need one set of motions and, one set of motions and eleven and thirty-five a second?
Madam Chair, how about doing this? How about, uh, approval on all of them, but with, with, with no bedroom units in the basement? That, that would take care of it.
Madam Chair, um, may, my, may I contribute? Um, I actually think that the basement bedroom on eleven is okay because the grade is pretty good in a single family. The one that I have issues with is just thirty-five because it's proposing a full kitchen and, uh, a full living unit in the basement. Uh, so I would like to put forward a motion
Oh, wait a second, so let me just ask Mr. Leiden. So, that was a proposed, single-family dwelling or a two-family dwelling?
It's a proposed, proposed, single-family dwelling.
Okay, okay, so let's, um, let's go with thirty-five, please, with a motion.
So, with thirty-five, I would like to put forward a motion of approval with BPDA design review and without a living unit with kitchen on the basement.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, for the rest of them.
I would like to put, I would like to put forward a motion that eleven, twenty-four and twenty-seven is approved with BPDA design review.
Second.
And thirty Snowden?
And thirty-seven also approved with BPDA design review.
Okay, and, uh, did we, I'm sorry, I'm a little confused. Did we get thirty Snowden Way?
This is for me.
Um, Ms. Ms. Barazza?
Oh, so I did put forward a motion to approve thirty Snowden Way, uh, thirty Snowden Way with BPDA design review.
Thank you, second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set, good luck.
Thank you very much, as always.
Calling a lost case for BOA one-one-nine-five-zero-eight-seven-one-ten R. Bell Avenue. This is a construction of a twenty-by-twenty detached standard garage. The violation is Article fifty-six, section eight, the rear yard is insufficient. And Article fifty-six, the side yard is insufficient. Name an address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Board, Crazy Sharkey, on behalf of the applicant, fourteen Washington Street, Douglas, Massachusetts.
Can't hear you.
Hello?
Yes.
Much better.
Sorry about that. Uh, Tracy Sharkey, on behalf of the applicant, let me just put my headphones back in. Can you hear me now?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I'm sorry about that. Madam Chair, Board, on behalf of the applicant, Crazy Sharkey, fourteen Washington Street, Douglas, Massachusetts. Guaranteed builder. We are proposing a twenty-by-twenty detached accessory structure, single story. Um, we are
Mr. Ambassador
I can hardly hear you.
So, listen, go back to what you had on before. And in the meantime, Ms. Ambassador, can you, um, scroll down a little bit so we can see where the garage is in context of the house?
Is there a site plan?
So, um, I actually asked Stephanie for a plot plan, I, that I couldn't find it and Stephanie did email me maybe three hours ago, so I have it in front of me, but it's, it hasn't been communicated to the whole board.
Okay.
It's missing.
Okay, so, um,
This is the plot plan, sorry to interrupt.
Oh, yes, it is, yep, that's it.
Okay. Okay, uh, did you have any issues with that, Ms. Barazza?
No, the drawing's adequate.
And is this a single family?
Yes.
It is a single family?
Yes.
And was this particular address before this board in the past?
Yes, in two thousand and eight for the covered steps on the front.
Okay, and was this also proposed for access to the rear?
Uh, proposed for access to the rear in what respect?
Okay, so, so, okay, so we got this, we're all set. Is any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition for the, um, of this proposal?
Madam Chair, I have no raised hands, but I'll go for you. Mayor's Office, or anyone else?
Um, Jack, I'm not sure if, hi, this is Peter Favreito from Councilor O'Malley's office. I'm not sure if, if Jack, I know Jack usually goes before me, so, um...
Well, you have, you have the mic, so go ahead.
Okay, um, hi, this is Peter Favreito from Councilor O'Malley's office. The council would like to go on record in support. Thank you very much.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Jack Duggan, Mayor's Office, Neighborhood Services. Sorry about that, I had a communication issue. But I just want to go on record in support. Uh, the applicant went before the West Roxton Neighborhood Council on June twenty-second and received their full support. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Karen Foley, Councilor of Harvey Georgie's office. Would like to go on record in support, thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Paul Sullivan for City Council, Judge Michael Flaherty. Council would go on record in support.
Okay, may I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval with BPDA design review.
Second.
Is there a second?
Second, Joe.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries, you're all set, good luck.
Thank you very much, board.
Madam Chair, before we do the rediscussions, I'm going to go back to the extensions from earlier this morning. Uh, calling BOA seven-four-six-three-zero-five-four-eight, Tylesville Street. Are they on?
Let's defer it to the next meeting, okay?
All right, so I'll make a most if it deferral. Then I can call the board meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Madam Chair, I'm going to call the rediscussions. Uh, case BOA one-zero-five-five-eight-zero-nine-one-sixty-seven Lexington Street. This is seeking to confirm the occupancy of two-family residential dwelling and change to a three-family residential dwelling and renovate. Violation is Article twenty-seven G from the East Boston iPod. Article fifty-three, section fifty-six, parking loading. Article fifty-three, section eight, three-family use is forbidden. Article fifty-three, section nine, the foyer ratio is excessive. And Article fifty-three, section nine, the building height is excessive in stories.
And, um, I'm, sorry, Mr. Fortune, after this, I suppose we can hear about deferrals for the one o'clock's. Just a couple anyway, so.
Okay.
Okay, sorry.
I didn't think I called twelve-thirties either, to be honest with you.
Yeah, no problem.
Name an address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney Matt Echol with Drago and Toscano. The business address of eleven Beacon Street. Also on the call with me today is Craig James, the owner of the property. As mentioned, we're seeking to change the occupancy from a two-family to a three-family and complete some minor renovations. The renovations will include repairing the existing rear decks and staircase as well as interior alterations. In terms of the floor plan, we are proposing three units. All three would be two-bedroom units. Unit one would be a detached unit with, uh, excuse me, living space in the lower level on the first floor. The lower level will have an office, media room, one bedroom and a laundry room. The ceiling height would be seven feet, seven inches. Uh, unit one will also, uh, be located on the first floor, which will be the two bedrooms and one bathroom with a rear deck. Unit two will be eight hundred and fifty, fifty-five square feet and will be located on the second floor. As mentioned, this is also a two-bedroom unit with one bath and a rear deck. And unit three will propose to be on the third floor at eight hundred and seventy-nine square feet. Two-bedroom one with a rear deck. And the ceiling height for the third floor ranges between seven foot six and eight foot eight. Uh, in terms of the violations mentioned, we are seeking a use variance. It is a two-F district and we're proposing a three-family. The allowed F is point eight and we're proposing one point two-two. Allowed height and a half stories and we're proposing the full three stories. And parking, we're required to have one additional space for the additional unit. Uh, as this is an existing structure and there's currently no parking, there's no place for us to provide that. Uh, we're also in the East Boston iPod. Without
Tell us about the basement occupancy, what's the floor-to-ceiling height down there?
Sure, Madam Chair.
Um, um, what's the floor-to-ceil height down there?
And, and on the plan, it doesn't show a bedroom as you described.
Uh, so apologies for any confusion, there is no bedroom in, in the lower level. So, the floor-to-ceiling height is seven foot, seven inches. We're proposing a media room and an office, uh, as well as a laundry room. And then there's a full, uh, egress walkout in the rear because there is a significant grade change. And then we do have, that's in the front of the building, which you can see, uh, right there on the plans on the left side. And you can also, in our rendering in the front, there are two good-sized, um, windows. They're not proposed to be egress windows because we do have an interior staircase at the first floor as well as the full, uh, walkout in the rear and we are not proposing any bedrooms in the basement.
And please make sure that your applicant understands that because we are, uh, concerned about health and safety issues. Should there be a fire or any other, or anything else? Okay, that, I mean, because we just want to make sure that it's not presented as media and office, et cetera, and then, you know, becomes a bedroom down there, okay?
Understood, Madam Chair.
And so, Ms. Barazza, um, how are the plans?
The plans are adequate.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Uh, good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Lynetta Millie with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We would like to go on the record in support of this proposal. During the community process, uh, the Office of Neighborhood Services held an award meeting on, um, July twenty-nine, twenty twenty, where the applicant addressed the concerns of the virus. And we also received sixteen letters of support, uh, including four from the director of events, thank you.
Madam Chair, Secretary, we also have those letters.
Madam Chair, I have no raised hands.
Can you have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval with BPDA design review.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Madam Chair, just so I clear the, uh, rediscussions, the next three cases, is anybody deferred withdrawing, uh, rediscussion? Okay, and then the one o'clock hearings, it's, well, it's actually not one o'clock yet, so I really can't call it in for the record, but... Calling the next case for rediscussion, case BOA nine-nine-three-five-zero-one-eleven Pacific Street. This is to construct a new rear addition, confirm occupancy as a single family and change to a three-family. The violation is Article sixty-eight, section eight, insufficient additional laundry room per, per unit. Article sixty-eight, section twenty-seven S dash five, it's in the iPod. Article sixty-eight, section thirty-three, insufficient parking. Article sixty-eight, section eight, insufficient side yard. Article sixty-eight, section eight, insufficient open space per unit. Article sixty-eight, section eight, excessive FAR. And Article sixty-eight, section eight, insufficient rear yard. Name an address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. This is Attorney John Barry with the Law Office of John D. Barry. Uh, the office is located at Ford and Granite Ave in Milton, Massachusetts. With me on this project today is RCA LLC. They are the architectural firm. Uh, presenting today is one of the principal managers, Christopher Drew. They're located at eleven fifty-six Dorchester Ave in Dorchester, Massachusetts. Um, this particular project is, proposal is at eleven Pacific Street in the South Boston neighborhood of Boston. It's an MFR district. Uh, what is being proposed here is a three, um, a three-unit proposal. Uh, unit one is a three-bedroom, two-bath and it will be approximately one thousand seven hundred and thirty-two square feet. It will be comprised of a bi-level unit on the first floor and in the basement. Um, the basement will have two of the bedrooms and a family room. The first floor will have the third bedroom, um, the living room and the kitchen area. Unit two is a two-bedroom, one-bath that comprises the entire second floor. That is nine hundred and forty Unit two is a two-bedroom, one-bath that comprises the entire second floor. That is nine hundred and forty-three square feet. And unit number three is a one-bedroom, one-bath, six hundred and sixty-one square feet, uh, unit. Um, there's been an extensive community process that was conducted on this particular project, including two-
So, I'm sorry, counselor, um, you know, since we do have your expertise here, can you talk to us about that basement unit? Um, and the floor to ceiling height in that? So this is going to be a new rear addition. Tell us about the floor to ceiling height. Tell us about the floor to sill height in the part of the, of the unit that's not new construction.
Um, so the floor, Mr. Drew, can you address that?
The floor to, the floor to ceiling in the basement is, uh, will be seven foot six minimum.
Okay, and what's the floor to sill height? Because I'm looking at the proposed basement plan and it looks like, uh, the extension is in the rear to accommodate the mass bedroom. But tell us about that front bedroom. What's the floor to sill height on that?
Uh, so the floor to sill height will be, uh, no more than forty-four inches above, above the floor itself. Because of the, because of the grade change.
Okay. So you want to have a new rear addition and you want to change the occupancy from a single family to a three-family, right?
That's correct.
And one of the units, and one of the units is proposed to be in the basement.
So one of the units will be a bi-level unit on the first, it will, so unit number one will be a bi-level unit on the first floor and the basement. Uh, there will not be solely a unit that is just in the basement.
No, I get it, but, but the bulk of the sleeping space is in the basement and that's, that's of concern to us. Uh, how are the plans, Mr. Barazza?
Madam Chair, the plans are adequate.
Any questions from the board?
I, I do have a question regarding the egress door that you're showing in the family room on the basement plan. Can you show us that in the elevation? I couldn't find that door. It looks like it goes out to a passageway.
Correct. Yeah, honestly, I'm not sure why it's not showing up in the elevation. Um, but yes, it should definitely be there.
But it's a full-size door that goes to the pa- to a passageway?
Uh, yes, I believe so.
Okay.
Um, can we, can we see elevations altogether? I'm a, was a little confused by some of the answers to the chair's questions. So, Mr. Barazza, the, the, uh, are we talking about window wells for the, uh, the apartment? Are we talking about sufficient height?
No, we're, they have the sufficient height. Um, and in the basement, they were showing an actual egress door to the passageway. So they have currently two modes of, two means of egress. One going upstairs to unit one on the first floor. The other one is a direct from the proposed basement plan. One is going directly to like a passageway. In the front, yeah, in the front.
At grade?
That's what I was asking the architect, and the architect say they believe so.
So it is at grade. Um, unfortunately, if you looked at, if you look at the proposed elevation, um, I think it's, if you scroll back up on-
It's to the right side, right, of the front elevation?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, it's on the, um, eastern side. From the family room, there is a door. Now, unfortunately, the grade, as you get to the rear of the structure, um, the grade does increase, I should say, it, the height decreases. But where the family room is located and where the grade is located, there is space there for a full door to be able to exit the basement.
So majority of the basement, it's not below grade?
It's not. Unfortunately, in the rear of this, um, this, all of Pacific Street is basically on a hill. Uh, and where, but that actually gives the benefit from the basement unit in the front of the structure, but as you get towards the rear, the very, very end, um, that is where the grade starts to increase. If you look at, um, elevation number EX five, um, that will show you in the rear where the grade increases.
Yeah, you can see it in the, the elevation right here.
But I think what's happening is you're missing, uh, clearance to go out to the rear bedroom. Because you have a deck above. You know, you want, you almost want like a window well, but it, it, there, you should take a look at that, but in the rear, there's not enough clearance, I believe. From the rear elevation. So you have to excavate.
Yeah, no, that's, that's something we can definitely make sure that, you know, you know, if, you know, that, that has all the proper egress and, and heights and all that good stuff.
Okay.
That could definitely be addressed. That's not a problem.
Great, thank you. I, I'm good with the questions.
Okay, any other questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office, Neighborhood Services, would go on record in, in opposition to this proposal due to letters we have received from the butters, uh, detailing concerns with density and characters in the neighborhood. Uh, we would like to recognize that the applicant has worked extensively and received some support from the community at large. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, Anna Calderon from Councilor Flynn's office. The council would also like to go on record in opposition to this proposal. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Paul Sullivan for City Council Lodge, Michael Flaherty, echoing the sentiments of, uh, Council Funs' office, the council would like to go on record in opposition.
Madam Chair, I have no raised hands.
Madam Chair, Secretary, Secretary, we have letters of opposition as well as a few letters of support.
May I have a motion, please?
I'd like to make a motion to defer, uh, to recommend a deferral to, for the applicant to work out with the neighbors. There were a lot of letters of opposition, so I'm recommending that the applicant defers.
So, um, Mr., Mr. Barazza, we've heard all testimony. We've heard everything, and generally, we don't-
Okay, so I'd like to make, I'd like to make a motion of, um, uh, to not approve, to disapprove without prejudice.
Without prejudice?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board.
Calling the next case, calling BOA one zero five three 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 seven sixty-four Clarkwood Street. This is construction of a three-family dwelling. The violation is Article sixty, section nine, the lot area is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Stuart Schreier with an office of one thousand five Dorchester Avenue, Dorchester, Massachusetts. What's proposed is a new construction, three-family. There is absolutely no living space in the basement. No bedrooms, no living space whatsoever in the basement. There are no roof decks. And the sole violation that we're facing is this lot requires six thousand square feet. We have five thousand six hundred twenty-six with three hundred seventy-four square feet short.
Okay, so, uh, how are the plans, Mr. Barazza?
Madam Chair, the plans are adequate.
Um, any questions from the board? Is, is anybody here to speak in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Good afternoon, members of the, Madam Chair, members of the board, Council people here from Neighborhood Services. Um, we would like to go in opposition or, um, in opposition, um, of the proposal on the record. Um, the Mayor's Office as well as the community has not heard from the applicant in, in a few months, and we have not been made of any, aware of any, um, updates. Um, the, uh, uh, community and the butters in the area are wary of, uh, density as well as construction managements for the proposal. Management, sorry, for the proposal, and also opposition from the Greater Mattapan Neighborhood Council. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam-
Sorry, go ahead. Go ahead.
The board. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Jordan Freys from Councilor Carter Royer's office. We also like to go in opposition because of lack of communication with the Greater Mattapan Neighborhood Council as well. Thank you.
Madam Chair, Secretary, we have letters of opposition as well.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I have additional raised hands. I'm sorry for Kenneth Mills. Kenneth, you've been on duty. Are you here to speak on this case?
Uh, yes, can you hear me?
Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Uh, good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Kenneth Mills, sixty-eight Clarkwood Street, which is, uh, directly next door to the proposal. Um, now to belabor the point, you've heard the, um, the statements of opposition, and I am, um, for the record, just stating my opposition again. This proposal's been rescheduled from March ninth and May, May eighteenth due to inconsistent information and frankly, the absence of detailed transparent communication with the butters by the applicant. And so, you know, Madam Chair-
So, so let me, let me ask you, what is your understanding of this proposal?
I, I honestly don't have a detailed understanding because it started as a four-unit town home and now it's a three-family home, and so there is just a lack of clarity as to what the actual, the, the detailed proposal is.
Okay.
And, you know, so I speak for myself and, and several neighbors.
Okay, so may I have a motion for denial without prejudice so this applicant can go do that, uh, do it right?
Okay, Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of denial without prejudice.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Schreier, um, you know, you know what to do, okay?
My client met with the neighbors. He knows what's being proposed.
So, so Mr. Schreier, uh, perhaps, you know, you know, you, you guys, you guys need to work out a different way of communication. Uh, because, you know, elected officials, soup to nuts, it seems, as opposition. Okay, thank you so much.
Calling the next case, calling BOA one 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 two seven eight five, twenty-one forty-nine to twenty-one fifty-one Dorchester Avenue. This is a change of occupancy from a four-family to a six-unit building, adding two new entrances on second and third floor. The violation is Article sixty-five, section forty-one, ostrich parking is insufficient. Article sixty-five, section eight, a multifamily dwelling, unit, unit used six is forbidden use. Article sixty-five, section nine, the foyer ratio is excessive, and Article sixty-five, section nine, the usable open space is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney John Barrett from the Law Office of John D. Barry, Fortin Granite Ave in Milton, Massachusetts. I apologize, Madam Chair, members of the board. This was a withdrawal. Um, I must have missed the opportunity to do that formally before this is being called at this point. The owner would like to withdraw their application.
Thank you.
Motion for denial.
Denial without prejudice.
Denial without prejudice.
Is there a second?
Barazza, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is the one o'clock case moving forward? I'm sorry, it's one fifteen, almost one fifteen now. It's Cambridge Street and Emery Road, here?
Yes, Jared Igraman here for the-
Is it moving forward, sir?
Uh, yes, Jared Igraman, attorney for the petitioners here.
Uh, let me call it to the record, sir. Calling, calling BOA one one four three five seven four four forty-nine Cambridge Street. This is companion case BOA one one four three five six five two Emery Road. This is for four forty-nine Cambridge. Demolish the existing structure, construct a multifamily dwelling building with one hundred and twenty-seven units or approximately eighty parking spaces. Includes glarom floor retail associated with two Emery Road project. The violation is Article fifty-one, section seventeen, the foyer ratio is excessive. Article fifty-one, section seventeen, the rear yard is insufficient. Article fifty-one, section sixteen, MFR condition in the CC one sub-district. Article fifty-one, section seventeen, the building height is excessive in feet. Article fifty-one, section seventeen, the usable open space is insufficient. Article fifty-one, section nineteen, MFR forbidden use in an L one, one sub-district. And Article fifty-one, section fifty-six, ostrich parking and loading is insufficient. This is for two Emery. This demolish the existing, construct a new multifamily dwelling building with twenty, with thirty-nine units associated with four forty-nine Cambridge Street. The violations are Article fifty-one, section nineteen, the MFR forbidden in an L one sub-disp- sub-district. Article fifty-one, section twenty, the foyer ratio is excessive. Article fifty-one, section twenty, building height is excessive in feet. Article fifty-one, section twenty, usable space is insufficient. Article fifty-one, section twenty, the rear yard is insufficient. And Article fifty-one, section fifty-six, ostrich parking and loading is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. I'm Attorney Jared Igraman of Ruben Junius and Rose in an office at one twelve Water Street.
So, Counselor, can you hold on for a second? May I ask everybody whose hands are raised to lower your hands unless you are here to speak about four forty-nine Cambridge Street and two Emery Road in, in Austin, Brighton? Okay, so please, everybody who's, I only need raised hands for four forty-nine Cambridge Street and two Emery Road in Austin, Brighton. Everybody else, please lower your hands. Thank you. Go ahead, sir. Tell us what's being proposed.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, with me today are David Lobster of, uh, Anchorline Partners. That's the petitioner, and architect Robert Brown of Parkinson Will. Uh, first, if I could get you oriented, if you could please go back just one slide. So this is in Austin. Uh, this is at the easterly edge of the twenty-twelve Brighton Guest Street area, uh, plan area. Uh, so it's north of Cambridge Street, south of the Mass Turnpike. This is an area that's transitioning from marginal industrial use to residential and mixed use. Next slide, please. We'll just go through the next view quickly. Uh, these are the existing conditions, Madam Chair. Uh, this is an automotive, uh, uh, building. We've been at this, uh, for about two years now, so it's now vacant, unfortunately. We're going to get an interim user in here since we can't clean it up. Uh, next slide, please. That's four forty-nine Cambridge Street. This would be the after condition if the project were approved. Please keep going. This is Emery Road. And Emery Road is a private way, but it's really, at present, just a strip of asphalt, so under the, uh, Brighton Guest Street plan, the idea is to make it into a real street, and that will happen as part of the project. Next slide, please. That's, this is a view from the same angle. Uh, next slide, please.
So I'm sorry, is this Cambridge Street with the bicycles and frentacles?
Uh, yes.
Yes, okay, so, so there's a, there's a proposal for a building on Cambridge Street and a, a layback on Emery Street.
That's right.
Okay.
The Emery Street location is shown here. It's currently a tow yard, uh, to the left in the photograph. It's not improved with any buildings. Emery Street is owned in fee, uh, by the, uh, petitioner, but it's open to public travel, so they're two separate lots for zoning purposes. Uh, next slide. Uh, this would be the after condition. Keep going, please. This is the rub roadside, rub roadside of that same building that, that fronts on Cambridge Street. This is the after condition on the next slide. Thank you, the next slide. This is where I'd like to stop on slide eleven. So to summarize, uh, this is a rehearing. Many of you may be familiar with the project. It's, it continues to be, uh, two buildings, but there are no longer any compact living units. That was a chief concern of the board. We've eliminated all compact living units. Uh, previously ninety-three out of the hundred and sixty-six units were compact. We've now reduced the unit count by making the demising walls move out, make the units bigger, one hundred and fifty-two, as you see. Square footage has not changed. The, essentially, the envelopes of buildings are the same. The height is slightly down a few inches. Uh, so one hundred and eighteen units at Cambridge Street, as you see on the right-hand side, thirty-four units on Emery Road, and then divided by that private way, which has to be completely built by the developer. Uh, the IDP is seventeen per- percent, so seventeen percent onsite affordable housing. I have a slide later that details how that breaks out. Eight of those units are for artists, and there's a slide later to explain what that means, how they're designed specifically for artists. They're spread throughout the two buildings, of course. There are shared amenities for the two buildings totaling, uh, ten thousand three hundred and twenty-seven square feet. About half of that is usable open space, but it's inadequate under the zoning, and I'll get into that. And then half of it is interior space. Even though this is no longer a compact living pro- uh, project, obviously, as an apartment, the amenity spaces are vital to making this a livable place, and I'll, I'll describe that. The parking count is constant from what was before, still 80, so it's roughly a half, 0.5 ratio. Please note that during large project review, the petitioner agreed there will be a covenant in all of the leases that should resident parking be instituted, less these would not be entitled to seek those permits.
Does that mean that their real estate taxes go down?
I don't believe so. I think the assessing...
I'm just being facetious. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I'm sorry. I, I'm sure you get applicants asking, yes, no, I don't think so.
No, but, sorry, go ahead.
All right. And then, as I said, the building height, these are six-story buildings. 449 is going to appear to be a seven-story building at the back, because there's a grade change from Cambridge Street as you go back along Rug and Emery of about 12 feet. So, it looks like seven in the back.
So, can I ask, on Emery Road?
Yes.
Does, does the rear of the building look at the Ron Kahaly Building at Union Square? What does it look at? And how close is it to the property line? How close is it to the property line?
Well, if you look at the top of this image, there is a project that was approved, I believe, at 40 Rug, because Emery Road terminates and it uses the address on Rug. But that's a new project going up, and that's also multifamily. I don't, I don't have at my fingertips the width of Emery Road, but under the 2012 BPDA plan for this area, it's just a local road, so it's the smallest cross-section. Perhaps, Robert, you'd be able to guess at the width, but I doubt it's more than 40 feet.
Okay. So, please go ahead with your presentation.
Thank you. Next slide, please. Now, in previous presentations, when this was a compact living unit project, there was, there was great concern about the square footages, and we really sharpened our pencil on that. So, I'd like to go through that. So, there are 79 studios. They range in size from 450 to 623 with an average of 474. Previously, we actually had 88 studios, and the average size was only 382 square feet. So, this is a significant difference. There are 46 one-bedrooms. You can see the range and the mean average of 700 square feet. The mean average is about the same as before, but we had 58 one-bedrooms before. The 25 two-bedrooms is up. There were only 18 two-bedrooms before, but we bumped that up to make larger units, as I said. The average square footage at 916 is only slightly more than the average of the two bedrooms before, which was 900. There are two three-bedrooms, and working with Counselor Braden, both of these are IDP units. They're about the same size before. We had two three-bedroom units before, but the average size is now 1445, before it was 1395. You should know that the affordability still needs to be worked out with the Mayor's Office of Housing and BPDA, but one unit was approved at the BPDA Board at 110% AMI and the other at 70% AMI. So, overall, again, there's 17% IDP, no compact units, and also there's lower affordability at 60 AMI for two of those two bedrooms. Next slide, please. This is the open space. If you were to multiply the normal 50-square-foot-per-unit requirement for the 152 units, it would be 7,600. As you can see, we have 5,204, and that necessitates severance. There is a good deal of private open space, meaning it's only accessible by one unit resident. You cannot add those together, so that's for your information. Most of that's at Emery Road. You can see in gray at the ground floor, there are quite large patios. But there are only seven units out of the 152 with that private space. So, that makes it incumbent on us to make sure that the open space is usable and well programmed. And then, most of the open space is in the larger building at Cambridge, Cambridge Street. You can see, shown there in green. That's the second-floor terrace, which I'm going to describe momentarily. Next slide, please. So, here is where most of the common areas for all of the residents, again, shared across both buildings totaling 10,327, combination of the usable open space under the code, which is inadequate, and the indoor space. So, first, we'll see in orange, that's the indoor space that we worked hard, the Board really pressed us to make sure it was programmed intelligently. So, at the top is a communal dining area with a large set of burners and oven, something, not just one 36-inch oven, but something that can really serve multiple people. And then, there's a door that opens to the terrace, which I'll get to in a minute. The next space is a community room. It's meant to be really flexible. It could be for working. There are three cubicles at the bottom. Those are those workspaces you see at the bottom. That's important so people can actually hear themselves think and have a phone call. So, those will be built in. Finally, there's a media room, and that's deliberately vague as to what kind of media want the residents to push it in the direction they want. If they're old school, it could be a dark room, or it could be computer-based. Getting back to the outdoor space, that's about 2,600 square feet, so it's sizable. There are picnic tables, obviously, to link with the kitchen. There's a grill outdoors. There's a living, a seating area in the southeast corner with a fire pit. But I do want to point out the play area because we bumped up the unit sizes. We have significant two bedrooms, and we really are expecting children here, so that's programmed in. What's not shown on this slide because it's the top floor, and I can show it if you wish, but it's not programmed, is a deck. There's a deck on Cambridge Street, so at the very bottom of this slide, where you see open to below, it's on top of that area, so away from the heart of the new neighborhood. But on Cambridge Street is a roof deck with about 2,000 square feet. Next slide, please. Finally, in my presentation, and then take questions and go through the floor plans as you wish, we wanted to explain what it means to be an artist. So, we worked with Artist Impact Alston, which is a local group, and of course, the City's Department of Arts and Culture. So, rather than just saying, oh, they're artist units, what does that mean? What we've learned from other projects and from those groups, you have to have dedicated ventilation. So, perhaps, some of the artists would be painters, or they're working with solvent, so it can't be the generic HVAC for the whole building. They have to have their own dedicated. You also have to have durable finishes. If it's going to be live work, that means wear and tear. We have optimized natural light at some of the units, not all of them. Again, there are eight of these units, but some of them do face southeast. For some artists, they do want that. Finally, unlike the open space and common area I showed on the second level here, on the first parking level, it's dedicated just for the artist. Smaller, because there are only eight artists, but the idea is that this is, this space would belong to them. And we're looking to have professionals, so I don't want to gloss over the art displays that you see. It looks like a very narrow area, but it's facing that new street, and that was deliberately designed with the groups I mentioned so that they could market their work. It's not enough that they'd be able to make it, but they need to sell it, generate revenue. So, also, the lobby that faces Cambridge Street, same principle. The idea is that resident artists would be able to display there. I think that's it on, on the artist. If I could go to the next slide, please. That concludes my presentation based on the concerns of the Board that were expressed in previous hearings. We have, of course, a full set of floor plans, and Architect Robert Brown can take you through that if you wish. Thank you, Madam Chair.
So, I just need a little bit of clarification. So, the artist's space in the previous slide looks like it's, is it shared artist's creative space, and then the artists have living space in the building? How, how is that, that working?
Yes, so the, each of the eight units, Madam Chair, have live and work area available to them, and so they can work in their units if they wish. In addition, there's the 825 square feet of shared office space for those eight artists shown in orange with the storage.
And the, all eight artists live-work space, are they, are they one-bedrooms? Or, in other words, you know, there's been a discussion about, you know, if you start off as a single person doing art creation and, and being a creator, should your family start growing? Does it mean that you need to move? Or is there a possibility for you to, to continue to live in this space? You know, given the size that it is or the design of it, that would allow somebody to mature through their life cycles in the same space?
No, it's a good point. In fact, it was raised by the artist groups that we work with. No, we have a mix. I, I remember when Artist Live Work was in vogue in the 90s, they were all studios, sort of, no demising walls. We have eight studios, but two one-bedrooms and two two-bedrooms. So, actually, two of the artist spaces are already large enough to be multiple people with children. We did, we did expect that.
Okay. And then, the question is, we had, as the Board, approved a similar scenario on North Beacon Street, just on the other side of, of, of North Beacon and Hino, just before Hino. And we approved studio space, but also lobby space for display and possible sale. Do you know how that has matured? Or maybe that's a question to ask when we get to the elected officials, maybe they have a better sense of what happened there. I will put that out there just so that I don't forget.
I, I apologize, Madam Chair. I'm not familiar with that, but I think we may even have someone on the line from Artist Impact Alston. They may have information as well.
Okay. And Mr. Brown?
Yes, Madam Chair. My name is Robert Brown. I'm a managing director of Perkins &amp; Will, 225 Franklin Street, Austin Pass. We can run through the plans, and we'll do it quite succinctly. The interesting thing on these two lower levels is, as the attorney indicated, we are 12 feet lower than Cambridge Street, and so we're very fortunate enough to have a lower-level parking access and then a second-level parking access off of Emery Road. At Cambridge Street, we have a lobby that you can see in the lower-left corner that's in sort of orange and a small retail environment that exists there. You can see that there is, at the bend of the parking, there's a set of stairs, and those connect to Emery Road so that the Emery Road building has access to those parking spaces. And what we've tried to do is indicate through color the, the studios ones and two-bedroom units. On the very far side are the townhouse units, and those are primarily one-bedroom and one three-bedroom. Next slide, please. This is showing that second-level plan, and at the very bottom, where it says open to below, are, is the area, two-story space for the retail and two-story space for the lobby. So, you can come in the lobby, go up a flight of stairs, or use the elevator to access the indoor amenity space as well as the outdoor amenity space. And then, as you see, the studios are the lighter blue. The A indicates artist units, so we've spread them throughout the building so that they're not just a singular location. And the red box are the, again, identified as the IDP units, and again, those are distributed throughout the building. Next level, please.
Mr. Brown, may I ask you this question? So, I noticed that on the Emery's, Emery Road address, your, your rear yard is insufficient. So, as I look at the building, I'm trying to figure out what those back units, given the change of grade from Cambridge to Emery, and then the lower level, the lower grade all back there, what would somebody living in those units be looking at? Will they be looking at blank walls? Will they be looking at a parking, parking garage with all the buildings that we've approved around there?
So, the Emery Road building is actually relatively flat so that there's not a contour change. So, the build, those units that are looking on Emery Road are looking to the, to the front of the Cambridge Street building. Those that are on the side where you see the stair, that is a party wall condition where you don't have any windows looking towards the 40 Rug project. In the rear, the dash line that's to the left of all the units, those are those outdoor spaces, and so they have, if you're on the first floor, you're looking into that and have access to that private space. If you're on the upper floors, you would be looking over that, and we don't have, we don't know any plans for units adjacent to it, so the census that we're providing, that upper levels views towards the city.
Okay. Okay. Let me just look at the other violations. So, the, the general height requirement is 35 feet, and you're going up to 68. Is that what you're going up to?
That's correct. 68, I think, is plus two inches.
68 feet, two inches. Okay. And then, the height, the, if this is an MFR, so this is a CC1, so the FAR is 1, and what are you going up to?
Chair, sorry, let me duck in. So, the Emery Road is 3.7 FAR. The Cambridge Street building, there are two ways to measure it because the garage is shared. If the garage were just for the building, it would be 4.6, but conservatively, we counted it in the building, so it's 5.7.
5.7, okay. Cambridge Street, and let's see, okay. Okay. How are the plans, Ms. Barazza?
Madam Chair, the plans are adequate.
Any questions from the Board?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. First off, just a comment, which is that this presentation is far more informative than the last time this project came before, so both in terms of the unit sizes and also the interior programming. Two, one of the things that was still unclear last time, and it hasn't been clarified, is what's the programming for the roof? You skipped over, the slides skipped over the roof, and nobody talked about it. That was very unclear last time, and what is happening now? That's question number one.
Stop at this. So, this shows that roof plan. You can see that we have the deck that the attorney had identified, that's about 2,300 square feet. It's only on the Cambridge side. The rest of the roof is really, is, is both PV-ready and also location for the individual mechanical units that will be for each of the units.
So, what's the, so what's the square footage? So, it's 2,000 square feet, and, and it will be used by everybody in both buildings or just Cambridge Street?
By both buildings.
Okay. And then, my second question was, who, who are these units being marketed to? What's the expectation of demographics of the residents?
My name is David Lobster. Mark, I'm with Anchorline Partners. The demographic that we're looking for is young professionals and families. We've made a representation through the public process that we will not market towards students or undergrads, and we intend to stand by that.
Is that, are you documenting that, or is that just your wishes? I mean, will that, will there be restrictions in the leases, or how is that going to be, how is that going to be carried out?
Well, we've learned from other projects, so there, it is documented in Article 80. We cannot actually, because of Fair Housing Laws, put in the same kind of covenant that we would for the parking, but we do know how to market away from students, new staggered move-ins, not have the leases start in rhythm with semesters. That's, that's how it's done.
Okay.
To discourage.
Okay. I know, I understand that, though. Thank you. I just wanted to make sure that that was being done. I, you know, the previous presentation had compact, it sort of was the worst of both. It was compact living units without the shared community space or without clarity on the space, so this is much better, and thank you for that.
Thank you.
I just, I just got one, I just got one comment I want to just get in on the record. Do you guys currently own the parcel at 449 Cambridge Street?
Yes.
Yes, yes, they do.
I think the building's in disrepair. I, I mean, somebody should clean it up. This, I mean, that's, that's horrible that abuddies have had a walk-by looking at a building like that with a proponent that's proposing the magnitude of the project that you're proposing. Like, it's not allowed to do that, so I just wanted to get that on the record.
I'm sorry, so we cannot hear you.
I'm sorry, Madam Chair.
Oh, better, better.
We expect to completely clean up the facade, and we're working with a group called Postcards from Alston to do an art installation during the interim period because we want, we do want the building to look and show much better than it currently does. So, we take those comments to heart.
Thank you. May I also ask a question of Mr. Brown? You know, I haven't seen you in, in a few years. Can I ask you about how this building will pick up the best of the design in Alston? You know, and... You know, and how it will complement the best of the design in Alston? Because there is the Honan Library that does something interesting. I know there are some brick buildings in proximity, so how does this design complement what's there?
Maybe we could go to, I think, the second or third slide just that would show one of the renderings. So, Madam Chair, the interest is to tie in really to the triple-decker, which is a pretty common size of unit on Cambridge Street. And so if we get, if we can go up a little bit higher, if we can get to that front elevation, we, and we represented to BCDC, and they were quite complimentary on how it's not copying the neighborhood, but it is articulating both at that third level where you see some carve-outs. The rhythm of the windows are being somewhat representative of the buildings that are there. We're using a metal panel to lighten up the building, again, somewhat reflective of what is a triple-decker, but not in a masonry sense. And we're certainly using the ability to have the lobby and the retail space, almost a two-story-high glassy area to liven up and activate Cambridge.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak, any elected officials or representatives of elected officials to speak either in support or in opposition of these proposals?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, like no record, in support of this proposal. As the board is aware, they've been through an extensive BPA process. With the most recent changes, they went back to the Alston Civic Association, received their support. And with changes regarding the micro-units, they've still kept their commitment to seventeen percent for IDP units with variations in the AMIs. We think this is critical in keeping local families in the area and young artists, so we're in full support. They've also presented a progressive plan for transit incentives to ensure that new residents are utilizing their public transit or taking bikes as opposed to adding to the congestion. And I know, Madam Chair, you had questions about what they would be facing at the rear of the building on Emory Road. So immediately behind it is a parking lot, but further across the street on Cano Street is the basketball courts and the local playground as well. Thank you.
And this is Mark Craven, Councilor of Brighton's Office. The board would like to go on record as being supportive of this project. We appreciate the fact that the proponent has continued to work with the neighborhood and our office on this project, and we also appreciate that they've included multiple artist unit, IDP artist units and two-bedroom, multiple bedroom IDP units. I, we also appreciate the lower parking ratio and, as Connor mentioned, the transit incentives to try to get people to use transit in the neighborhood. I did just want to note that we, that something that is typical in the neighborhood is the approval of a project with the proviso that the proponent will not rent to undergraduate students, and this is something the counselor typically just leaves up to, whether that is requested is the counselor typically leaves that up to the neighborhood association. So if the ACA does request that, we would just ask that the proponent agree to that. Thank you.
Mark, may I ask that if you have a chance to look at the project on North Beacon Street, and I'm just drawing a blank on the side street, it goes by the Honan apartment buildings, the...
Yes, are you, that project is called Art House on the corner.
Yes, you know, I'm curious to know how that Artist Live Work has worked out there and also how the retail space or the show, the show space has worked out there so we can take the best practices of what has worked there and bring it to this particular project.
I believe that the building is, has just opened, I think, so it might still be leasing, but I know that gallery space is now being operated by an Alston-Brighton-based arts organization called Unbound Visual Arts, so that's going to be open. I'm not, I don't think it's open to the public soon, but I know that they have leased that space.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Paul Sullivan for City Council at large, Michael Flaherty, echoing the sentiments of the Mayor's Office as well as Council of Brighton's Office, particularly with respect to the seventeen percent affordability as well as the extensive public process as well as limiting the compact units, the council would like to join his colleague, Council of Brighton, in support of the project. Thank you.
Afternoon. Madam Chair, members of the board, Karen Foley, Councilor of Savvy George's Office. We'd like to go on record in support of this project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I do have a few raised hands. No one else?
Yes, let's go for it, please. Ms. Ambassador?
Sure, I'll start with John Woods. You've been unmuted. Can you state your name and address for the record, please? Hi, John, can you hear us? Jacob, you've been unmuted. Can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Oh, yeah, Jacob Pumphrey of 32 Bayard Street in Alston. Wanted to speak in support of the project.
Perfect, okay, thank you. Vin Coyle, you've been unmuted. Can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, my name is Vin Coyle. I'm not a Boston resident, but I'm here on behalf of six Alston residents who are working right now. I'm a business agent of the IWORK as a Local Seven. And speaking with these six members, we rise in favor of this project. That's it. And I have one member in Brighton as well who also is in favor of this project.
Thank you. Okay. Edward, you've been unmuted. Can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, my name is Edward Boches. I live at seventy-five Cronin Shield in Brookline, but I'm a working artist in Alston. I exhibit there frequently and do a lot of pro bono work for the city and for Alston, the Village Main Streets. And I would like to say that so far, the developers have been incredible partners in collaborating with me. I'll be among those who clean up the whole front of that building and display an exhibit called Postcards from Alston. They've been supportive and collaborative with that.
Thank you, sir.
Caller five, you've been unmuted. It's six one seven two six eight. Are you looking to speak for this proposal?
Yes, thank you, Madam Ambassador. Madam Chair, this is my representative, the carpenter union. On behalf of Congress of Albert Botman Ray, I just want to go on record in support.
Thank you. Okay, and I just have one more. Jacob, you've been unmuted. Did I get to you, Jacob, already?
Yes, I spoke already.
You spoke, okay, sorry. Thank you. All right, let me just go back to Jacob.
Everybody who's spoken, please lower your hand so we see who's left. Thank you.
Back to John. Can you hear us now? I've unmuted you. Don't want to skip you. Can you hear us, John? No, he must have connected. Okay, and that's it from our side. Thank you.
Is Annabelle Goins still here? Because usually we do hear from Annabelle or...
I'm here, I'm here as well.
Oh, Tony, you're both here. Okay, may I hear from both of you, please?
Sure, I'll go first if that's okay. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, Tony Disidoro representing the Alston Civic Association. I just want to go on record that we supported this project the last iteration, given that the majority of the concerns are those who did not support the project revolved around the compact living pilot and the size of the units. The most recent changes that the proponents announced have gotten additional support for the project, so we would like to go on record in support.
I also have a Brandon here. I'm sorry, Brandon Les. Go ahead. You've been unmuted. Can you state your...
I'm Brendan Les from A Olympia Road. I'm here to support the 449 Cambridge Street project.
Thank you. All right. And Nabella, you, okay, you can unmute yourself, and Nabella, since you're a panelist.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Annabelle Goins of the Brighton-Alston Provenment Association. We did not vote to support this project due to the height, no green space, the sidewalk size, and this is the density of this building. It's a thirty-two thousand square foot lot with a hundred and sixty-four thousand square feet proposed. We are very concerned about the micro-units. I'm also having a question on the process here. They did go back to the ACA, which is great, but they did not go back to the, they didn't have a public meeting with the IHG. They did not come back to the BEIA, so I'm not sure where the process is. This is the first time I've heard of these changes, and they certainly have had plenty of time. And also, they're not consistent with the guest street study. It's four stories away from the guest street and brain tree that's proposed, not six to seven. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Hampton, I guess this means that Article eighty did not check back with the community?
They've already received their Article eighty review out of chair.
Okay, so if you reach, if you get your Article eighty approval and you come in with anything less, you can just go ahead?
No, they would be an NBC, and this was dealt with through development review, but this is our, what you had before us is because it's gone through the Article eighty process already, and our recommendation is approval with design review because we support the greater size of the number, sorry, the reduction in number of units but the increase in size.
Okay, excellent. Ms. Ambassador, can we just hear from Jimmy Lehman? I don't know who, I don't know who he is, but I see a raised hand, and then we will close comments and take a vote.
Okay, Jimmy, you've been unmuted. Can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Yep, Jimmy Lehman from thirty-two Bayard Street, Alston, resident. Just, yeah, I didn't raise my hand, I forgot, but just to offer support for the project. I thought it'd be a great benefit for the local neighborhood businesses as well as good for the Alston neighborhood.
Thank you. May I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I'd like to perform a motion of approval with BPA design review.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, and this is for both 449 Cambridge and to Emory Road.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
We are, what I would like to do is, for the call of the chair and my apologies ahead of time to anybody who's here for call of the chair, I am going to request that this be postponed to the first meeting in September, so may I have a motion to that effect?
A motion to defer.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And I don't remember the date of the first meeting in September. May we then...
We have a date of September twenty-first, Madam Chair.
Thank you. May we move quickly now to the discussion of the open law complete resolution?
Yes, hello, Madam Chair, this is Tom Bro. Just a little background on this one. I want to speak up. Can you hear me, Madam Chair?
Just speak up a little bit, please.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. So just a little background on this one. There was an hearing on April sixth for a roof deck at forty-two Irving Street where the complainant, Mr. Harder, had been waving his hands in front of the screen, and the board did not call on him to justify on that project. He filed an official opinion on the claim, which we discussed in session on April twenty-seventh, responded that we don't believe he violated anything. He appealed that to the Attorney General's office. The Attorney General issued his decision on July fifteenth, which we received at our office. The Attorney General determined that the board had not violated the open meeting clause. If the board would like to discuss anything or ask any questions, it may be heard.
And please, and please clarify, the complainant had also put in something in writing in the record, which we did have?
Yes, Madam Chair, his answer is just put in writing two days prior to the hearing, so it was before the board.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you for that, and thank you for the update. I know you have to run, Mr. Olick, mayor, and so the meeting is now adjourned. Thank you.